Good evening. We want to call the meeting to order, please. Please, if you can, take a seat, and we're going to call the meeting to order here on the 3rd of September, 6:30 PM. Begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Merker, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Commissioner Fitzpatrick. If you'll please rise.
This is a story of a very bad boy staying out late at night, carousing, drinking, gambling, and just being bad. A boy misbehaving. The next morning, being Sunday, the boy's parents told him to go to church and pray. He was told to take out his Bible and pray for forgiveness, but the boy took out a deck of cards and spread them out. "Put them away," the parents stated. After the services, the boy was taken to the pastor. "What do you have to say for yourself, son? Tell me." "I have been on a mission to understand what life is all about. I have been alone within myself." The pastor said once more, "What do you have to say for yourself?" "You see, Father, when I see the ace, it reminds me that there is but one God; and the deuce reminds me the Bible is divided into two parts, the Old and New Testament. And when I see the three, I think of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. When I see the four, I think of the four evangelists who preached the gospel. There was Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. And when I see the five, it reminds me of the five wise virgins who trimmed their lamps. There was ten of them. Five were wise and were saved, and five were foolish and were shut out. And when I see the six, it reminds me that in six days, God made this great heaven and earth. And when I see the seven, it reminds me that the seventh day, God rested from His work. And when I see the eight, I think of the eight righteous people God saved when He destroyed the earth. There was Noah, His wife, three sons and their wives. And when I think of the nine, I think of the leapers, our Savior cleansed, and nine of the ten did not even thank Him. When I see the ten, I think of the Ten Commandments God handed down to Moses on a table of stone. When I see the King, it reminds me that there is but one God in heaven, God Almighty. And when I see the Queen, I think of the Blessed Virgin Mary, who is Queen in heaven, and the Jack the Knave, who is the devil. When I count the number of spots of a deck of cards, I find 365, the number of days in a year. There's 52 cards, the number of weeks in a year. There's four suits, the number of weeks in a month. There's 12 picture cards, the number of months in a year. There are 13 tricks, the number of weeks in a quarter. So you see, my deck of cards serve me as a Bible, an almanac, and a prayer book. And friends, even though I may be drunk, thinking mischievously, and ready to do bad things, my deck of cards cleanses my soul, brings back love in my heart, and makes me realize to thank you, God, every morning when I wake, and every evening when I go to sleep. Thank you. Thank you, God, for another day I thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Merker, for the invocation. You'll find that that invocation was written in the 18th century by a lady named Mary Bacon. That was also known as a soldier's Bible or a soldier's almanac because of all the things he told you. That's how the soldiers related to it. So it was very good. We'll go for agenda approval, and additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion, second, but under discussion, was there a -- I'd ask city manager, was there a request to table the --
The high ridge --
High ridge items?
Yes. Mr. Weir contacted Development this afternoon and asked for a continuance to October 7th, so they have some more time to continue to work with the county on the traffic analysis they're doing. So that is item --
F, nine, F and G.
Nine, F and G. There's two items under F and G.
That's up to the commission. There's a commission -- there's a request to table those items. What's the commission's desire?
Mr. Mayor, we've delayed this once already on this project here, and I think we should go forward tonight. We have many of the audience from the neighbors, neighborhoods, wishing to speak on the subject. Like I say, we've delayed it once already. I believe that we should go forward on the project's merits as of today.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Commissioner Merker?
I realize that the people in front of me, all of you, have a deep concern, and rightfully so. However, one thing a city always needs is people wanting to build and develop, no matter if you're for or against something. So I very strongly feel, out of respect to the business community, that this should be tabled, and it should be discussed when this company can come forth.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. I'm not in favor of tabling this. I'm in favor of hearing from the citizens, but I will request that we don't make a motion tonight until we hear from what Palm Beach County is going to do.
That's tabling it, though, isn't it?
No.
Yeah, well, let me tell you what. We've already -- we've heard from the citizens. I let them speak once before on this, and then we tabled it, because once you table it, then you can't have any other discussion. So we have one that wants to table it, one that doesn't, and you want to --
Well, we have the citizens here, so I want to hear from the citizens. I'm just saying we don't have to act upon it. I'm just saying, you know, until we hear from the county, full disclosure.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick, what's your position?
It's the developer's project. I think he should be able to bring it up when he wants to. So I'm for tabling it. I mean, that's his prerogative, to bring it before when he's ready. He's saying he's not ready. Is that what he's saying?
He's saying he wants to discuss it with the county, some more issues about it, so that's what --
Mr. Mayor, a project of this scope should have its I's and T's already crossed. This has already been between our -- before our planning and development board. It's gone through all the -- through the city offices. I think we're ready to discuss this tonight. To delay for more time, I think, would be unfair, and for the uncertainty that would provide for the neighbors who are going to be part of this.
Would we like to let the developer make a comment, why he's asking for this to be delayed?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Brian Chekis, principal planner with Cotler and Haring. It's vital that we take the requests from the community, took all that in, had taken our time to carefully do traffic analysis, get back and forth with the county on additional information to help answer their questions, and the questions that we got from the advisory board and from staff. We need that extra time. We couldn't start our analysis until school started at the charter school, so there was timing issues, and this truly is trying to address the issues that were brought forth by the citizens. We want to have the right answers. Forcing us to go tonight will do no good. It'd be better for us to come back and just tell you what we found, based on listening to everyone's comments. So we respectfully request to be tabled one more month.
The question I have, sir, is a project of this scope, why wasn't this all done far in advance before it gets to this point here? Only at the time that the neighborhood was starting to ask these questions, did you go forward to get some kind of a traffic study done. Nothing was done until it was brought to your attention. Is that correct?
No, sir. That's not accurate. We had a traffic study done, and it didn't show any of the issues that were being raised by the citizens and raised by the advisory board. So once we heard the on-the-ground feedback, we went ahead and did that additional analysis. Our traffic report shows that everything works out there, but the feedback from the citizens, and the feedback from the folks who drive the road every day, there's specific issues that have arisen that we had to go out and specifically address that was not found in that original report. It's more on-the-ground, you know, anecdotal experience on the ground, and we had to -- that's our job now to divine that out and make sure that our studies are accurate to what's really happening out there.
So you do have a traffic study that's been done?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, so you have that --
Absolutely.
So we should be able to proceed with that, no?
No, based on the information that we got and the feedback from --
Why would the -- if you did a traffic study with the county, I would presume?
Our traffic study is vetted through Palm Beach County --
Okay.
-- and approved through the City of Boynton Beach as well.
Okay, so that was done through all the proper channels, correct?
Correct. Correct.
So why would anybody's opinion sway that one way or another?
Because apparently what the citizens are experiencing isn't jiving with what all of the paid professional analysis is telling them, and us going out and getting additional information, per the comments that were raised, it was our responsibility to do that. We went out and did that at the proper times. We couldn't do it a week before school started. We couldn't do it the day school started, but we did it a week after school started, when things normalized, and traffic was more normal when school was in. So this is a timing issue. That's all it is. It's just timing, and us being able to get the right information to get the answers that the citizens asked for.
With a project of this scope, why -- my question is, why wasn't this done far in advance, only at this point, when you had your studies done and found that there was -- there really wasn't an issue as far as the project was current, as far as you were concerned, only when the residents started voicing their concerns, did you step -- take one step back and say, "Well, maybe you started the waffle a little bit on your own study", no?
If they have issues that we didn't realize or we didn't understand, it was our job to get that additional information.
But when you were --
And that's what we're doing. We're trying to answer the question that came from all the citizens, from our public meetings with them, and from our neighborhood meetings with them, and our discussions with the folks who know this area. So we -- all we're doing is just trying to get the answers and have enough time to be able to provide them. That's all.
Did you have these meetings before this project was designed, and did you go into the neighborhoods and ask those people those same concerns that now you're concerned about?
Never did, because none of our analysis came up negative. We had nothing to report that would have been adverse. Everything was vetted out by staff and approved by staff because everything worked on paper. But what we're hearing from the community is something different. So we've taken those extra steps, and have taken the time, and have committed our resources to making sure that we're uncovering things that we may not know as the folks who live there and are on that road every single day. So now that we know those issues, that's what we're chasing down now. We just need the time to get the answers. That's all.
And it goes back to the question. My question is, why would you not be a good neighbor and go into the neighborhoods surrounding this project and ask those same questions before we get to this point? Only now are you backtracking to take some of their concerns into consideration.
Okay, you don't want to table it. We got that. Okay. Commissioner Merker?
Thank you. I think there's a couple of very basic words, and the rhetoric we just heard is over the top. It's called communication, and not saying one side is right or one side is wrong, but when two sides have opinions, both sides should want to hear it. Personally speaking, when this came up before, I was not in -- I have not been in love with what you were projecting. But I do say professionally, because you're willing to come into our city and potentially put something forth, which is supposed to potentially be good for the city, then you must respect both sides. I feel very strongly that the people here should have the right to talk. Why? So you can learn directly from them, and you can learn directly from this company. The idea of playing politics because you come from a different district is absurd. Respect the business as we respect the people who are before us, and this way, both sides will understand one another, and I know for myself it'll make it an easier vote.
I have -- I can tell you, I don't -- I listened to the people last time. I gave them the -- and I did hear what they had to say. I know their concerns. Think we could go through it again tonight and get them to have a repeat of everything they said before, but I understand what their problems are there, and I'm ready to move on this tonight. But Commissioner McCray?
Okay. My whole thing is that I need to be fair with the developer. I need to be fair with the citizens, and I'm just saying, a little more time for the developer, you know, and I like to be honest, because I'm voting for the entire project. I represent the entire city, just one addition, but the entire city. I want to get all my facts straight before I sit up here and vote, and I'm motioning to table it.
Second.
Motion to table --
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Show the motion passes three to two. That item be tabled. We'll be heard at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Good. Any other corrections to the agenda?
They want to know when should they come back?
Is it the next meeting?
October 7th.
October 7th.
First meeting in October.
October 7th. Please, please, please be here. I could have put it to bed tonight. We'll listen to you again. We'll listen to you again. No problem. We'll listen to you again. Yes?
No.
No.
No, not on this issue.
No. It's a public audience. You can't speak now.
You can speak under public audience now. This has been tabled. We can't discuss it any further.
Not allowed to.
Okay. Sorry. It's been tabled. We can't discuss it any further. That's a rule. I'm sorry.
Can we stay and talk under public audience?
Pardon?
No.
Stay in what?
Talk under public audience?
Yes. Yes.
Not that it's on the agenda. We table it. We can't speak to this.
They can't speak to it.
No.
They cannot speak to it since it's been tabled.
It's been tabled. We cannot take any more input on this issue. It's been tabled. Can't discuss it again till October 7th.
Victoria, I was wondering what happened to her.
Please leave quietly. We want to continue the meeting. Okay, is there a motion, a second, to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I thought you said something.
Who made the motion, Tim?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Okay. I like to --
Next.
Motion that the agenda be received with the -- as amended.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion is approved. Please, please talk when you get outside so we can continue our meeting. Okay, the next item is to conduct the first budget public hearing for fiscal 2014-2015, proposed annual operating budget. Turn over the attorney to read the --
Thank you, Mayor. Just to the public, a quick word about the budget process. Tonight is the first of two public hearings that the city commission will conduct to discuss the millage rate for the upcoming fiscal year and the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Members of the public have the opportunity to ask questions about the proposed millage rate and the proposed budget, and to have staff answer specific questions if you do have specific questions. You could also make generalized comments about the budget if you like as well. The first resolution that the city commission will take up this evening is the resolution that establishes the tentative military, but staff will first make a presentation, then I'll review the resolution with the commission for approval.
Okay. We'll turn it over to the staff to give us a quick overview of the budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Tim Howard, Director of Finance. This is an updated version of the PowerPoint that you saw in July, so we'll just go through this and --
Tim, can you volume a little bit more for us?
I'm going to ask -- I'm asking IT to turn our mics up. They're low -- they've been lowered, and it's difficult to hear anybody, so you might want to give it a second.
I thank you for saying that, because I don't want to think I was getting old.
Now you are.
Thank you. Good.
Yes.
Is that better? Can you hear? Is that better?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we'll start to go through the slides. If you have any questions, please stop me and ask.
Just a hundred thousand.
So the overview is that the tentative budgets for fiscal year 1415 in total is $186.3 million for all funds. Of that, $72.5 is the general fund, which is 39% of the total funds. We're going to review the required actions that the commission has during the month of September for the budget. Tonight is the first public hearing, and you'll adopt a tentative millage and a tentative budget. Next Thursday at 6:00 PM, you'll have a special commission meeting to adopt the final fire assessment resolution, and on September 16th at 6:30, you'll have the second public hearing, which adopts the final millage rate and the final budget that goes into effect October 1st. Budget actions that have occurred since year July, public workshops. With the direction of the commission, we added back three firefighter positions that were initially proposed to be eliminated as of July 1st, 2015, so we put those back in. Those were three that were funded by a grant that we received two years ago. We also were notified, the fire department had applied for a grant for bunker gear replacement, and the city match was $103,000. We've been notified since then that we were not awarded that grant, so we reduced that out of the fire department's budget. And between July and now, the commission approved recommendations for our health insurance for citywide. In the proposed budget, we had assumed and proposed a anticipated 15% increase in premiums that the city would pay, but our increase came in at zero. It was flat, so the premiums are the same as the current fiscal year, which saves throughout the budget $990,000. $712 was in the general fund, so we were able to reduce expenditures by that amount. This is just a chart showing all the funds and the expenditures per fund and the percent of the total. So you've got general fund at $72.5, utility at $40 million, capital, which is general and utility, at $36 million, solid waste at $12.1. You can read the rest of them if you'd like. This is the funding sources that funds the $186 million. Water and sewer utility fees are $40 million, which makes up 22% of the overall $186. Property taxes, $27.1 million. Capital and bond sources are $36 million. Fund transfers, internal service transfers, public service taxes, the list is there. This is a listing that's in your resolution, in your budget resolution you're going to be asked to review and pass tonight. This is the appropriation amount per fund that will be -- that's proposed to be adopted. It lists all the funds that we budget, the general fund, water and sewer, golf course, solid waste, fleet maintenance, warehouse, self-insurance. On the right-hand side, the special revenue funds of traffic, safety, local option gas tax, public art, recreation program, community improvements, the cemetery, then the capital improvement funds, which are the general government and the utility, and the public service tax debt, which pays the bond payments on our outstanding general bonds, and that totals $186 million. This is a slide showing that full-time personnel, what it was back in 2007/8, which totaled 948, the proposed budget, has 794. It's just a historical. Of the general fund budget, the $72.5 million, it's an increase of $1.28 million over the 13-14-year budget. Of that, personnel expenses make up 78% of the expenses, or $56.4 million. And the general fund also, the public safety amount, is $48.9 million, or 67% of the $72.5 million. The other breakdowns of the departments and the percent of the general fund is listed on the side. The major variables from the current year of 1314, like I said, the increase was $1.2 million. So the three pension funds, we had actuarially increases that we had to budget for next year, the increased funding for Schoolhouse Museum of $148,000, and the increase to ground maintenance to maintain medians and do improvements in landscaping. We are proposing an additional $300,000, which totaled $1.4 million, so you can see it's over the $1.2 million increase. Next slide is per department, what the current budget of 1314 is and what the proposed budget is, and the percent changes. There's two slides to here. This one goes from city commission down through police, code and compliance, communications. Next one is fire, emergency management. It totals, you can see that the current year 1314 is $71.2 million, and the proposed budget's $72.5, or a 1.8% increase from 1314 to 1415. These are the major proposed revenue changes. Listen, I may need my glasses for them.
Good news is, we're keeping the tax rate at the same rate.
Right. Tax rate's 7.9. It's the same as this year.
Cut to the chase.
Property taxes, property taxes increased because of the value -- our property values went up. The amount to the CRA increased because the value within the CRA went up, which is a good sign. Fire assessment, there's a proposed next week for the final fire assessment. To increase the fire assessment, that's going to bring in an additional $565,000. Certificate of Use Program, which was in front of you, I think final reading is tonight for the ordinance, is slated to be phased in and start, I think, January 1st, and that will bring in an additional $250,000. The state is anticipating an increase in our share of state revenue sharing and sales tax, and we have -- we requested an increased fee structure for the ALS billing, which will bring in an additional $200,000 on the revenue side. Some of the transfers are changing. Our traffic safety fund, we had budgeted $250,000 this current year, and next year, we're not budgeting anything to come into the general fund. There's a proposed ordinance on the agenda tonight to increase fees for solid waste, residential, and multifamily units, which we're going to -- we're requesting to increase the transfer of solid waste from $4 million to $4.5 million. And the good news is, with all the changes from year July workshop, the proposed amount of general fund balance to use to balance the 1415-year budget is down to $461,356. And if you remember, in the proposed budget, we had slated to use $1.4 million, so that amounts down, so we're getting closer to current revenues paying current expenses, which is a good sign. And most of that is because of the reduction of the -- keeping the flat, the health insurance premiums flat. That was $712,000 that we were able to reduce the expenditures by. Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
No, just the CFO, he's great with numbers, but I'll tell you.
Dry delivery?
Yeah. Bottom line.
It is what it is. I apologize.
It's not very exciting.
You know, I've looked at this slideshow, I don't know how many times, so. This one is the proposed funding sources for the general fund that will pay for the $72.5 million expenses. Property taxes, the levy, millage stays at 7.9, which is, like we said, the current rate. The net taxes to the city will be $27.1 million. You've got a category of fund transfers, intergovernmental licenses and permits. It shows the amounts and the percentages of the total general fund. This is the slide that shows you the estimated fund balance from fiscal year 2005 and '06 to present, what we're projecting for 1415. It also shows the red line is our -- the policy that we have for 10% reserve, emergency reserve, based on the upcoming budget. So your $72.5 million proposed budget for 1415, we require $7.3 million to be set aside as emergency reserve. We're projecting right now that we'll end up with a $9.3 million fund balance, so the difference between the 7.5 and the 9.3 is what you're adding to your fund balance, projection for next year. This slide shows you what's happened with property taxes from 2006-'07 to 1415. On the red line, you can see where the high was $32.3 million, and it dropped off during the economic decline, and now we're on the upswing with the property val -- the economic decline, and now we're on the upswing with the property values coming back. The blue line is the fund transfers that was used to make up the difference of the declining property taxes, and you can see that amount starting to go back down. We're trying to whittle that down a little bit. This slide shows you the proposed tax levy versus the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage rate that you would impose on the current property value to generate the exact same amount of tax revenue as the current year. With the property values increasing, to generate the exact same number of tax dollars, your millage rate would be 7.4664. And this one will show you on the right-hand side, that if you were to adopt the rollback rate with the current, with the proposed budget that sits in front of you, we would, in essence, be short or have to reduce expenses by a million five or find additional revenue by, of a million five. This slide shows you the assessed value over a number of years, and it's very small to see. You've got it in front of you, and there's copies in the back, too, if people pick that up, if they wanted to see it. But in essence, it shows that the assessed value citywide back in 2008, '09 was 5.6 billion. This current year, 13, 14, was 3.9 billion, and the proposed going into 14, 15 has increased to 4.2 billion. So it's an increase of about 7% over last year, or the current year. This one is a statement for, by statute, the truth of millage, the TRIM Act that we have to comply with. The proposed ad valorem taxes is 7.9 mils. The actual tax increase is 5.81% per the calculations of a rollback rate of 7.4664. That's the rate increase on millage. And just to note that in July, you approved a tentative millage rate of 7.9. This slide shows you that the estimated number of properties in Boynton Beach that pays under $200 in property taxes in 2011 was 29.2%, and it's dropped to about 25.9% for the upcoming year. And the right-hand side just shows you number of parcels. This slide gives you scenarios for, at a 7.9 millage rate on four different hypothetical value of houses, and what the current tax bill is, and what the proposed tax bill will be under the 7.9. And these are with homestead exemptions, and under the, and if they're under the Save Our Home law, the Save Our Home law caps the increase in the assessed, the taxable value or assessed value to either 3% or the CPI, whichever is lesser in the year. And this year, according to Palm Beach County, it's 1.5%. Next slide will show you the same scenarios, except for it's a commercial-based property, which do not have homestead property values. And again, shows you from the current year and the proposed year with the, an estimated increase in property value of 8.7%. And that concludes the slideshow.
Questions from the Commission?
I have one question, and that is, since you gave us the presentation, will they be available for the public anywhere besides?
These presentation, there's 50 copies in the back. We can load it to the website.
Okay.
So they can see that tomorrow.
Thank you.
And once the budget is adopted, Commissioner, it will be posted online.
Right.
It's available on the web.
Right, the proposed budget's online now.
Okay.
That you saw in July, and then once it's adopted in October, we'll, we publish it on site after we do the official.
Right. Also, that bunker, about the fire thing, I know we had, we lost money, but we also saved $990,000 in regards to...
Citywide on premium health insurance premiums.
Thank you. I just want that to be noted, I'm just saying, so we lost in one and gained significant other. Thank you.
And I believe the Fire Department's planning on reapplying for that grant.
You believe they are going to do it?
Yeah, next year.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to have any comments on the budget, the proposed budget? Anybody in the public? See none?
Victoria.
Oh, you've got to come give your name and address for the record.
Victoria Castello, 406 South Seacrest Boulevard. One question. I was trying to get the information online, and I wasn't able to.
Or?
To look at the budget online. I did talk to your IT department. I did write a note to my Commissioner. Until this evening, I wasn't able to get it.
I apologize for that. It's posted under the Finance Department, under the Budget and Financial Reports, and it, it's under the Finance page, and it has the proposed budget cover, and you click on that. It's been there since July.
Okay. Then we just want another comment. On page 14 of your 530, Resolution R 14078, the first sentence, I think it isn't prepared by an interim city manager, I think.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Things change.
Thank you.
Meeting's not over.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Dr. Peter Blas, 113 West Tara Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I would like to say something with regards to the budget, which may be relevant at this moment, more likely next year. I visited the Appraiser's Office for the county, and you know, if you are a citizen over 65 years old, and if you have been in your property for over 25 years, then I was told that the city has the authority to reduce your taxes. The state has enabled cities, that is what I was told, to lower the taxes. Let me repeat, under what conditions? People who are over 65 and spent 25 years in their homes. So I would like to just bring it to the attention of the budget people and of the city council that such a possibility exists, and there is a sizable population of veterans, of people who are over 65, who could benefit from that. So this is just what I wanted to say about the budget, and I hope it will be taken up next year.
Thank you. I'll bring the Commission the information. I believe that what he, the gentleman's referring to is, the state of Florida has allowed individual jurisdictions to pass ordinances to give additional exemptions to certain residents, one of them being over 65 and living in their houses for 25 years consistently. I think what it is, is it's an additional exemption. I don't know if it's a full exemption, but I'll pull the information and forward it through the manager's office for you to, to review if you want to.
Thank you.
Question, please. It's just based on what you just said, because of age?
It's, if I remember.
And longevity?
I believe it's a statute, and I think it's the two, it's a dual thing. One is age and number of years that they've owned the property and homesteaded the property. It's an option for local jurisdictions, and I think it's an additional exemption, and I don't want to give the amount because I could be wrong. I don't think it's a full exemption. I think it's a part, it's an additional amount of dollar exemption.
You'll give us that information for the next question here, yeah.
I have one question for Tim. So the total revenue that is projected, net property taxes are 27 million plus this year?
Correct.
I would like to know what year that it used on the upswing back in the boom days, what year that was equal to, like 2005, 2004?
On page 17 of the chart, I think we track, you see on page 17 here?
That's transfers.
No, here is your...
If you look at the other, the other line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one here.
No, page 17.
It is, it's the black line or the green one, right?
Right, correct.
This is your trend of your ad valorem.
Tax, okay.
Yeah, the top line was, that's transfers.
So it's somewhere between 2008 and 2009. 2008, you had 29.5 million.
Got it. Okay, I was reading that. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yes. I have one other thing to bring up. The, it's not in the budget, is somewhere needs to be the, for negotiating with the county, 100,000 for the 4.85 acres, Lake Ida.
I don't think that's in the budget, right?
Right, so I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
Because it needs, we need to vote on it, then put it in the budget.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask the city manager, I'm just saying, those funds, can they come out of the parks, or we have anywhere to pull those 100,000 dollars from, because we did give him, okay, to go and negotiate, in good faith?
Yes, we do have a park impact fee fund, that is a revenue fund for developer, developers that pay a percentage based on the number of units they're putting in, they pay on a scale, and we get that revenue, and it's to be used for park improvements or park planning. So we do have a balance in that fund of 585,000 to date, with some, about 302,50 of it has been encumbered for projects, so there is some funding available out of that, that fund. The Commission can also adjust the budget up an additional 100,000, and we pull the 100 out of the fund balance, our reserves, per se. Or we can pull the 100 out of our capital improvement fund, which would stall or delete 100,000 in other capital projects that have been scheduled, and I would not recommend that.
I think it should come out the parks fund, I'm just saying, it's already there. I'm just saying, we don't want to stall anything, and it's already there.
I agree. I don't want to take it out of reserves. I'm trying to build the reserves, not take anymore. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I agree with what the mayor just said. Also, my only question is, would be to the Parks Director. Over the course of months, the question is simple. Do we have the money to maintain the parks, the beaches, the way they should be maintained? I have a question if the finances are there to maintain it, to bring in another piece of property where maintenance will also be part of it. How does that affect what we have already? And I'd like an answer on that.
Well, I believe this site that Commissioner Fitzpatrick's talking about is a native site that will be pretty much kept a passive piece of property for potential future use as a connector to Lake Ida and Delray, many years away. Right now, there would be no continued maintenance costs, I believe, or absolutely minimal. There's, there's no access to the site at this point. It will not be an improved parcel, so there will be no additional impact to our budget from a maintenance standpoint, not for many, many years. Then, then it would have to, whatever ends up being developed has to be budgeted.
What about presently?
We struggled, no. We, do we have as much money as we would need right now to maintain our parks? Absolutely not. And that's something we...
So if that's what I'm hearing is, then to spend another 100,000 when we're not maintaining the parks, I won't say properly, that's the wrong word, used inadequately because of funding, therefore to put another 100,000 when what we have isn't being maintained properly, I think is a question mark. I'm not saying it's wrong to want to acquire more land, but is it feasible and financially a smart thing to do when we're not maintaining what we have now adequately? I'll use a nice word.
Okay, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. It is feasible, I'm just saying, the money is there, I'm just saying, it's a passive park. I'm just, when you said passive, means nothing is going to be done, and the money is there, and I disagree, Commissioner Merka, with you, it, money is there. I disagree with you. I think that we need to go ahead and purchase the land. If the county said this is what they want to do, acquire the land for the future growth of the city of Boynton.
You want to make a motion to that effect? Because that's what we're going to have to have, I think.
I'd like to make the motion that we have that 100,000 put aside for that purchase.
Out of the parks.
Out of the parks, so.
Second.
Impact fee fund.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Show the motion passes, quarter to one.
And Mayor, just to add, the Commission will have, eventually, once, if the deal gets finalized with the county, and they, and they're willing to sell the land, that is subject, obviously, to county commission approval, as well as a purchase and sale agreement will come before this commission for approval as well. So that, that will, this doesn't finalize that transaction, it just appropriates the proper funding.
Understand.
It should also be noted, it might not be 100,000.
Right.
Could be somewhere up to 100,000, so.
Right.
That's what we said.
We have more negotiating to do.
Up to.
The...
Talk to Bob Weissman.
Okay, we've finished public, just, what's the, I want to just put out the date of the second public hearing?
Yes, sir. It's contained in Resolution R 14077. The second and final public hearing is September the 16th at 6:30 PM here in the Commission chambers, and the members of the public have the same opportunity then that they had tonight, which is to ask questions, make suggestions, or make comments or criticisms or praise of the current proposed budget.
Take that.
All right, we'll then close the public hearing, and should we move to the proposed Resolution 14077?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve Resolution R 14-077 as presented, with our $100,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous.
Just to reiterate, the proposed millage rate is 7.9000 for the general fund, and that proposed millage rate is 5.81% above the computed rollback rate of 7.4664. Resolution R 14078, a resolution of the City Commission adopting the tenet of budget for the coming fiscal year.
I moved.
There a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, show the motion is unanimous. Okay, then we'll now go for informational items by members of the City Commission. I'll start with Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Okay, August 19th, I went to the Forest Park Neighborhood Association meeting. August 27th, went to the 13th Annual Firefighter Auction and Brew Room. I thought I was going there to have fun, but I ended up talking about pension and contracts for an hour and a half. August 29th, I was at the strategic planning session for most of the day. And August 31st, I went to the IBW Labor Day picnic. And September 1st, at Veterans Park in Delray Beach, I went to the Ian Mountners Candlelight Vigil. It was hosted by the organization for the Addict's Mom, and he was the young man who was addicted to Craig Tom and dove off the Gulf Road overpass on 995. It was his 21st birthday. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Castello?
We had a strategic planning meeting on August 29th. It was attended by the Commission. Some great information by Lyle again, moving our city forward. I also went to the memorial service that Commissioner Fitzpatrick just spoke of. It was very touching. It amazes me that the young adults in this country, this world, I guess you could actually say, the, some of the issues and problems that they, that they have, and, you know, they come in all colors and shapes and sizes. It's not one size fits all. It was pretty eye-opening for me. We were there with the county commissioner, Steve Arams, maybe 200, 300 people there, and it was a joyous, but yet sad occasion. Friday, I've been invited to a roundtable with Congressman Ted Deutsch and Congresswoman Lois Frankel, and the discussion is going to be on sober homes. That's been one of the things I brought up before this commission. We're going to have a discussion on, at a federal level, and maybe we'll have some trickle-down effects to our local government, so we can at least try to get some kind of a handle or regulation started on these, these homes that seem to be popping up just about everywhere. Thank you.
Commissioner Merka's left the dais. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. I also attended the strategic planning session along with the rest of the Commissioners and the mayor and the vice mayor. I was invited to come to the links, Boynton Links, which I said I'm going to swing by. I swung by that day, and guess what? The manager was on vacation, so I timed it just right. Thank you.
Okay, I guess. Last Thursday, I did give a talk at the local Boynton Lantana Rotary Club, and just addressed them on things that are going on in the city. And it's an organization, a civic organization, that does a lot of good in the community. They work for anything they can do to help a community. And like most civic organizations, a lot of the membership is dropping off on these Kiwanis, Rotary, things like that. They're, they're really struggling for membership, and for anybody that's interested in getting involved in your community, that's a good place to start, if you'd like to belong to one of those clubs. So I just want to put a little pitch for them. If you have the opportunity to belong to one of them clubs, you do, they do a lot of good work. And I think you have, I've talked to the city manager, they'd like to get some exposure about who they are, and when they are, and when they meet, so we're going to try and probably create a page on our... going to try and probably create a page on our website about civic organizations in the future here, so you can look forward to that coming about. The only other thing I just want to announce on next Wednesday, I believe, is September the tenth, we will have a State of the City, anybody interested in that, and that's going to be at, I believe, Ben Venuto's, is that correct? Uh, so if you're interested in the State of the City, that's a good place to attend. That's all I have, okay? Announcements and community and special events presentations, um, the financial advisory committee, uh, Stephen Grant, are you present? You want to give us, uh, uh, the recommendations from the financial advisory committee?
The mayor, motion to remove from the table before he speaks, please.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
So the motion ends. Good evening.
All right, good evening, U.S. City Commissioner, Stephen Grant, Northeast Third Avenue, Boynton Beach, um, this is the first year I've been chairman of the city, uh, the financial advisory committee, um, we have, it, from the history of the financial advisor committee, it started in 2010 when the city's budget needed to be reworked to, uh, cut costs and find new revenues. At this point, there is only one, uh, action item of that original plan that I believe was listed of fifty or sixty of them, um, we request that, for a future, that, um, the city commissioners look at the original action items so we are able to help the city more because we've only had five items this, uh, year, and after this year, we're, don't really have anything else to do. But we do, uh, do the city services survey, which I believe is very useful, um, we got twice as many, uh, over, more than twice as many people doing the survey, and I believe that we will continue growing this, uh, survey and finding out exactly what, uh, citizens want and value about the Boynton Beach. Um, I want to go over, the main questions that we had were, question five, the factors of the city, that the, the citizens believe is most important in the city?
I'm sorry.
Um, I don't know, did, uh, were you able to get the budget survey from 2014? The main, uh, factor that the citizens believe is important is the police, fire, and the re, uh, rescue, and the le, the least important is the cultural factors. We gave, uh, the citizens five different options to choose from, from extremely important, important to very unimportant. Uh, the next question that we did was, how satisfied are you with these city services? And the fire and rescue ambulance received the highest, whereas the landscaping and city maintenance received the lowest. Um, according to the financial, proposed financial budget for next year, an additional three hundred thousand will be used for that, uh, landscaping and city maintained streets, so I believe that's, we're heading in the right direction that way. And the final main question we have is, do you feel that the city taxes and user fees are appropriate for the services provided? And the highest was the, the police and the rescue, and we, they believe that the city taxes for the police and rescue are, are very, extremely reasonable, and that the landscaping and the city maintenance is what needs improvement. A few other information, there was fifty-nine comments, um, that I suggest you guys read, it'll give you insight into what the citizens are requesting that they do. Um, the average age of the residents of, completing the survey was forty-six, and the average years that they lived in Boynton Beach was fourteen. The second, uh, action item that we had was review vacant, uh, buildings and lands and for potential use. This is on page twenty of the, the packet, the agenda item, where we, uh, separated, uh, we were, received a list from the, the, uh, the city of all vacant lots and, uh, lands, and what we ended up doing is dividing the lots and vacant land, vacant lands and the parks, and chose three different items, either, you know, prepare it for auction or sale, uh, leave it as the status quo, or turn it into a, a green space, either a park, a community garden, or just plant some trees, because, you know, the, part of the city of looking good is that, you know, nobody likes to look at a vacant lot, but if you have some trees there, it makes everything look nice, um, one of the things that Boynton Beach, you know, has, uh, come this, I think, was June or July, is that we have plenty of mango trees that have been growing for over thirty years, and so I believe that if we keep on planting these fruit trees, that it will give a benefit for our residents to have some, uh, free food, um, and, you know, it's visually appealing.
David, I, I just want to comment on that survey you did on the vacant lands, I read it, it, it was pretty intense, uh, and it, it was an eye-opener for me, I didn't realize we had that much, the city owned that much vacant lands, although some of the parcels are small-
Yes.
I think maybe at some point that the city, we should look at shedding some of those, uh, they're really useless to us as a city, uh, and like you say, it could be used, uh, for better use.
Absolutely, um, and that, I'll tie that into the action item five.
Just before you tie that in, untie it so I can go back, uh, there are seven parcels that's located in District Two, you know, on Northwest A-12, 10th, 10th, you know, I have paid attention to those, I just want you to say thank you, I've got them right here.
Right, oh, okay, um, we also had the city prepare a vacant lot map, um, it wasn't able, Tim says it wasn't able for printing, but if you like, we could have that forwarded to you, so you can get a, a bird's eye view of the vacant lots available. We weren't able to see what the CRA owns, and so, we don't know exactly what, you know, the other hand is doing with regard to the vacant land and the land owned by the CRA, but we believe that what we would do, anything that they were trying to do with vacant land, we would, uh, probably, agree with that.
Question, did you request a map from the CRA?
No, we did not request the map from the CRA.
That's probably why you didn't see it, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And I'd also like you guys to look at, uh, what is it, number, I guess, twenty, page twenty-six, it was, uh, vacant lot near Martin Luther King Boulevard, and we're saying that it might be, is likely to sell, and so, you know, Martin Luther King Boulevard is a commercial area, and so we believe that, you know, instead of having the vacant land there, selling it for a developer or either commercially or residential would be advisable. Uh, page forty-one.
Before you go from that, you know, I'd like to comment, but in regards to the CRA, we are trying to do land acquisition, I'm just saying, well, we're trying to pull property together, I don't know if anybody told you, but perhaps if you would have gotten their map, you'd have seen what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay. And it's, I just want you to beat up on Martin Luther King Boulevard, that's mine.
No, we're, we're just, you know, I, I understand, like I said before, if anything that the CRA is doing, we would agree with them, um, we just, from our perspective, this is what we decided.
Thank you.
Um, we rejected, uh, some of our former vice chairman's recommendations for Quantum Park and the parcel west of Fire Station, um, he said that it would, should be best left alone, um, we were looking at Quantum Park, uh, particularly, we pulled it up, uh, back in the early nineties, it was set to be developed as a park, and nothing ever went through with that. Um, there is access on the road, there is a closed gate, and we believe that, you know, that area, because we have, just voted against the recommendation to do nothing, we would say, we were trying to say, well, we can't vote to recommend do something, but we wanted to bring that to your attention, that there's vacant land, a vacant park that was scheduled to become a park that is, hasn't been doing anything. Action item number three, you had us look at, evaluate alternative energy sources for buildings and funding, um, we took a look into this, we contact, our former vice chairman looked at, contacted FPL, and we have two of our, uh, committee members looked into water conservation and the possibility of putting up, uh, solar lights for the city, uh, we both recommended for the water conservation and for the city lights, however, with the city lights, we were shown that it really wasn't cost-effective, it was more for showing that the city is in the right path of becoming green, along with, uh, the Galaxy Elementary Uh, we didn't do anything for the action item number four, we don't believe that is, you know, part of the financial advisory committee, and, uh, Commissioner Fitzpatrick asked us to look at the viability of a, establishing a nonprofit organization, um, there is new IRS ruling, there, uh, it's, they created a 1023 EZ form for nonprofits which basically limits, you know, we do, I'm sorry, reduces the amount of paperwork with getting a nonprofit status, and so, regarding some of the green space available, we would probably recommend if the city commissioners, if there was another nonprofit in the area to donate to that nonprofit to build and maintain. And that there is currently a nonprofit, the Greater Boynton Beach Foundation, that is in their bylaws that are set for the cultural and educational factors in the Boynton Beach City. And that's, those are our five items.
Okay, any que, other questions? Um, we might, I know you did ask at the opening that, now that you've done that, you have nothing else to do, so, I would ask that maybe the city manager put on a feature agenda, that the commission give, uh, some consideration of what they want to do with the financial advisory committee, uh, what they should do to go forward, what we want to give them to do.
Basically, you know, we, we have the ordinance was issued, um, review the ordinance, and I guess review the, the original, uh, reason for, for why the, uh, financial advisory committee was in place, you know, we-
Well, thank you for your report.
I, I, before you leave-
Stay tuned.
Thank you, I need to know, in regards to your committee-
Yes.
Are you all up and running, you have enough members on your committee, and how often do you meet, et cetera?
Okay, we currently have four members, which is the minimum for a quorum, um, and so, I'm not going to be in town for the next couple of months, so we are not able to have meetings, however, we don't have anything to do, so that's not the big deal. Um, we do need, you know, we need from the, you guys, you know, a purpose, really, do you want us to be continued as, uh, helping the city out, you know?
That's what I asked the city manager to put on the feature agenda for.
And, you know, we, we do appreciate the opportunity to help out and permit, present these items to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like that on the next agenda, or do you want to wait for Mr. Grant to return back to town? Are you still interested in staying on the committee?
Absolutely.
Do you want to wait till, maybe he's back, or timing-wise?
And I, and I do agree that the, the city should have the services, uh, the city services survey every year, that way, you know, you'll know exactly what's going on, and so I believe that's our, if that's our only thing, we'll, you know, try and figure out other things to do along the way.
Thank you.
And we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is, uh, announcement of the preliminary flood maps, public open house to be held on Monday, September eighth, 2014, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, at the Boynton Beach City Library, Library Program Room, located at 28 South Seacrest Boulevard. I'd asked, uh, Assistant City Manager Crease Lejeune if he'd come forward, there you are, and you want to make some comments about this issue?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Crease Lejeune, Assistant City Manager, um, we would like to encourage all residents of Boynton Beach and Palm Beach County to stop by sometime on Monday between four and seven to view these preliminary maps. What these maps are, they have changed the flood zones for Palm Beach County, including our city of Boynton Beach, so if you were in a flood zone before, you may not be now, you may still remain, if you were not in a flood zone, that may ha, also have changed. It's important for you to know whether or not you're in a particular flood zone because it will affect your homeowner's insurance, if you are in a flood zone, then you are required to keep flood insurance. Um, at this meeting, there will be, uh, members of FEMA, there will be, uh, insurance experts that can answer your questions, there'll also be engineers and US Army Corps of Engineers, the state of Florida, and there will also be local city, uh, building officials and floodplain managers there that can answer all your questions, so, if you have ever wondered about your flood zone, come out, look at the new maps, sit down, talk to the experts, and find out exactly how you're going to be affected by these new maps. After the viewing that week, Monday's in Boynton, and then there are going to be three other places in the county where you can view the maps, after that, there'll be a ninety-day period of which people will have an opportunity to make their comments and appeals, and then after that ninety days, the maps will be finalized, there'll be no going back, and it was quite a long extended time since the last time the maps came out to now this new map, so, over ten years before you get to change maps again, so I would encourage everyone to come out and view the flood maps and talk to the experts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before you go, is this information on our website?
Um, yes, the information is on the, uh, utilities webpage, it's also prominently featured in the front homepage, we've also sent it out on Twitter and Facebook.
Just want to make sure that the newspapers get it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next one is presentation, All Aboard Florida, by Ally Solis, Public Affairs Manager, and Jose Gonzalez, Senior Vice President of Corporate Development.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, Madam City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and Madam City Clerk, my name is Ally Sol, and I am the Public Affairs Manager for the All Aboard Florida Project, I'm joined by my colleague, Jose Gonzalez, he is a Senior Vice President for, of Corporate Development for Florida East Coast Industries, and we are very pleased to be able to pres, present an update on what we believe is Florida's most transformational transportation project, so, um, All Aboard Florida is a privately-funded inner-city express passenger rail system that will connect Central and South Florida, which are two of the state's most visited and populated, uh, regions. We are the legacy company of Henry Flagler, so we will be utilizing the existing Florida East Coast Railway, um, which was built in the late eighteen nineties, um, and has been an operational railroad for more than a hundred years, uh, to connect these two regions. We will have four stations, they will be located in the downtowns of Miami, Fort Lauderdale, West Palm Beach, and then the Orlando International Airport. All Aboard Florida is two unique and complementary businesses, uh, the first is the inner-city express passenger rail system that will connect Central and South Florida in just under three hours, and the second is the development of about four million square feet of transit-oriented development around our three South Florida stations, and both of these, uh, companies align perfectly because people take mass transportation to get to dense urban centers, and that's really what All Aboard Florida is doing. So, why now? Um, our project aligns with two mega-trends that we continue to see, not just in the United States and Florida, but throughout the world, uh, more people continue moving to city centers, they want to live in areas where they can walk to work, walk to retail destinations, walk to entertainment options, um, I saw an article that was actually just published in Coastal Star, where Boynton Beach is talking about revitalizing their downtown city center, and a transportation option that connects the major hubs along the east coast, like the start of All Aboard Florida, is just one of those options that promotes that growth. Um, and then the American Association of Public Transportation continues to see more and more people taking public transportation options and relying less on their personal automobile, because as we all know, traffic continues to get worse and we all continue to sit in it. So, why Miami to Orlando? Um, as I mentioned, Miami to Orlando, Miami is the seventh most populated county in the nation, Orlando is the most visited city in the nation with more than fifty-two million visitors, um, these two city pairs have a very dynamic relationship, and when connected by a mass form of transportation, we know that we can leverage that to spark new opportunities for both regions. Um, the, the visitor who visits Miami is very different from the one who goes to Orlando, uh, Miami is really the international gateway, um, to not only the South Americas, but it's now becoming the international gateway, gateway, um, to the Middle Eastern countries, and Orlando's market is a primarily domestic market, uh, with the majority of their visitors coming from, from not only the United States, but from also Canada and Europe, so they're very, two very complementary pairs. Existing transportation options between cities are, sorry, unreliable, expensive, and inefficient. Um, coming from downtown Miami today, it took me forty-five minutes just to get to the Miami-Dade County line, if I had been on All Aboard Florida, I would have been fifteen minutes away from downtown West Palm Beach, um, so, traffic is only going to continue to get worse, as more and more people not only move to Florida, but more and more people visit our state, and so we have to start looking at alternative ways to move people throughout the regions. Who is our market? Um, our market is really, it, the landscape of, of Florida, um, we are about a third tourist, a third, uh, just Florida residents who are traveling back and forth, leisure travelers, and then about a third businesses, so, I can't tell you, in almost every presentation that I give, I have people that come up that own businesses in Miami or one of the major destinations along our corridor that say, you know, I can't wait until this service is operational, because I really look forward to expanding my business to one of the other destinations along the route, because I know that if I need to get to downtown West Palm Beach, I don't have to leave my house two hours in advance and sit in traffic while I'm waiting to get to a meeting. So, All Aboard Florida will be quick, convenient, competitive, comfortable, connected, and current, um, by quick, I mean Orlando to Miami in just under three hours, using two high-powered diesel locomotives that- locomotives that will reach maximum speeds of 125 miles an hour, although not in this area. Our peak speeds through Boynton Beach will be at maximum 79 miles an hour, and as I'll get into later, we are upgrading all of our infrastructure along the corridor to actually reach those speeds. We will be convenient, so we will offer hourly service starting in the early morning and ending around 9:00 p.m. That means 16 northbound and 16 southbound trains will be added to the corridor. And the reason for this hourly service is, A, we know that there's the demand, and then B, we have to provide a convenient option for our customers, because if you are a business traveler that's going to West Palm Beach or Fort Lauderdale for a lunch, and you miss your train because that meeting ran late, and the next train doesn't come for three or four more hours, you're never going to take All Aboard Florida again, because it would have been much more convenient for you to get in your car. We will also be competitive. While we haven't announced our pricing structure yet, we will definitely be cheaper than flying and comparable to driving, and we're also working with all of the major tourism destinations along the corridor to co-market our transportation option. We'll be comfortable. I'll let everyone in this room in on a secret. So very, very soon, we will be announcing the manufacturer of our rolling stock. This is something that we've been working on for at length. They will be 100% built in America and have world-class amenities. Every seat will be as big or bigger than that of a first-class airline cabin. So our All Aboard Florida is not just a transportation option, but it's really gearing toward the guest experience. We will be connected. Since we own the corridor, we're able to develop our own dynamic Wi-Fi system that will allow a business traveler or a family to stream movies, or catch up on their favorite show, or one of the 16,000 students that go to UCF that hail from South Florida to catch up on a lecture as they come back on the train to visit their family. And we will also be current. I mentioned more and more people are taking trains. The popularity of taking public transportation continues to grow. So, significant upgrades. All Aboard Florida is a privately funded project, and our investment in the rail infrastructure alone is about $1.5 billion. So what does this mean for everyone in this room and everyone who traverses or uses the Florida East Coast Railway? We are double-tracking the corridor between Miami and Cocoa. That track will be continuously welded, so that clickety-clack that you hear as the trains rumble down will actually go away. That will occur for both freight and passenger, because the two, the two systems will share tracks. We are upgrading every single grade crossing along the corridor to meet the highest applicable safety standards set by the FRA and the Florida Department of Transportation. As many of you commissioners know, you all have agreements with the railroad that dictate that you would primarily be responsible for funding these safety improvements. However, All Aboard Florida last September announced its willingness and its commitment to pay for those safety improvements to the tune of more than $60 million in Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County. So what does that mean for quiet zones? That meant that we've been working for more than 18 months with the Palm Beach and Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organizations to determine how we could implement quiet zones at the same time as we implement the All Aboard Florida project. What that means from a local perspective is that the Palm Beach MPO has allocated about $6.6 million, while Broward County has allocated about $4.2 million to make these upgrades that are needed to reach that quiet zone level. So you can imagine that if it wasn't for All Aboard Florida, the total cost of quiet zones would be actually more than $70 million. But we're, as Nick Yurin, Palm Beach MPO Executive Director, has said, you know, quiet zones along the FEC from city of Hallandale Beach to downtown West Palm Beach would not be feasible without All Aboard Florida covering the lion's share cost of these improvements. And we're committed to continuing the safety improvements as we continue up the corridor. And then our initial investment in double-tracking, upgrading every grade crossing, installing positive train control, new signalization along the corridor, also paves the way for the future commuter rail system. I know that this city has been working very closely with the Florida Department of Transportation and the South Florida Regional Transportation Authority, as they study expanding Tri-Rail Coastal Link onto the eastern city. Boynton Beach would have a stop in their downtown. Many SFRTA board members have publicly said that if it wasn't for All Aboard Florida coming on before them, it, it would be very difficult to find the funding for Tri-Rail Coastal Link. So they are leveraging our investment to make this project happen that much faster. And our company has very publicly said that we see commuter rail as the next logical step for passenger rail on the FEC corridor. So transformative. Our station in Orlando is located at the International Orlando Airport. This is really going to be the future intermodal and mobility hub for central Florida. You know, a lot of people ask, why isn't it located in downtown? Simple. Sun Rail, which is Central Florida's commuter rail station that just opened to record ridership numbers, will actually serve this destination. So that means you'll be able to take All Aboard Florida into the airport, go to downtown Winter Park, downtown Maitland, downtown Orlando, all without having to use your car. This will also serve an automated people mover that will connect it to the North Terminal, a future maglev system that will connect it out to the convention center, and there will also be rental car options, as well as ground transportation options to the theme parks that exist today. In West Palm Beach, we will be located just between Detoura and Avirnia, and to the west of Quadrell. For those of you who are familiar, each of our South Florida stations will be located in areas where there has been no revitalization or economic development or development for quite some time. Mayor Moye classifies this area as really the hole in the donut. City Place and the Government Center is to the north, to the, Clemata Street and, and the Government Center is to the north. City Place and the Performing Arts and Convention Center are to the south. So we really are connecting those two areas, as well as here, we are just two short, two blocks to the east of the existing Tri-Rail Station, and we will also connect with their trolley system. In Fort Lauderdale, we are located just north of Broward Boulevard and to the west of the Broward County Bus Facility. Again, this area has been underdeveloped and underutilized for years, but fast forward to the end of 2016, and we will be building a brand-new gateway into the city that will also connect with their future wave streetcar system. And then to mention, our Fort Lauderdale and West Palm Beach stations are also both being designed and built, working with SFRTA and the Florida Department of Transportation to accommodate the future commuter rail service. And in downtown Miami, this is the original site of Henry Flagler's Grand Central Station, so this land has also been in the company for more than 100 years. Today, it's surface parking lots. Fast forward to 2016, and it will be about 3 million square feet of transit-oriented development, a 50-foot elevated station, and really, the catalyst that drives new economic development in the western side of downtown Miami, which again, has not seen development for decades. So we really are creating new urban centers that, that dictate that live-work-play lifestyle. This is my new favorite slide, fact versus fiction. So, one common thing that we hear is, no profitable passenger rail systems exist. Anyone who says that does not have a complete comprehension of the facts. Looking in the United States alone, the ACELA service, which is a high-speed rail service that connects New York, Boston, and Washington, D.C., when taken out of Amtrak subsidized model, that service actually does make a profit. When it was first introduced, and this is kind of what All Aboard Florida looked at when we were looking at, you know, how does our system work? How does it compete and look with other systems around the country and around the world? ACELA, when it first started, took about four hours to connect those destinations. The majority of people actually drove or flew, because flying was faster and driving took the same amount of time. But when ACELA updated its tracks and got the, the transportation time to, down to under three hours, it now captures the majority of the market. And then if you also look at the Eurostar system in Europe, that system also does make a profit, as well as two other new passenger rail systems that have opened in Virginia, and their first year in operation, they also made a revenue. So Trojan horse to run more freight. It's important to note that Florida East Coast Industries, which is All Aboard Florida's parent company, and Florida East Coast Railway are two totally separate companies with a different management, different executive structure, executive structure, and different, different goals. FECR has operated freight on that corridor for decades, and they will continue to do so. All Aboard Florida is investing more than $1 billion in infrastructure that freight does not need to increase its capacity. FECR in 2006 ran about 24 freight trains on the infrastructure that exists today. Literally, the infrastructure that is in the corridor today. If they wanted to increase their service tomorrow, they could. They don't need to double-track the corridor, they don't need to install positive train control, and they don't need to build three stations in South Florida, or they don't need to create 40 miles of new track between Cocoa and the Orlando International Airport, which, I might add, our leases with the Florida Department of Transportation, the Orlando Orange County Expressway Authority, and the airport actually prohibit us from running freight on that new track. Public investment. So All Aboard Florida is a privately funded project. We have applied for a $1.6 billion railroad rehabilitation and infrastructure loan. That is a loan program that has existed since the early 1990s, strictly for projects like this, and improvements in, in rail projects that increase public safety and promote economic development. We have submitted our business plan, our ridership model, and our financial statements to the Federal Railroad Administration, and in turn, they hired an independent financial advisor to actually review our loan application, just as you would do if you were applying for a home loan, to determine, A, if we can actually pay it back, and if we have a viable business model. If our loan is approved, it will only be approved for the amount that we are actually able to provide collateral, and it will have to be repaid with interest and in a set amount of terms. I might also add that we did a bond offering for the south segment Miami to West Palm Beach that was successful, so we actually have the $405 million in place that we need to start construction on that section, and I might add, construction is, is imminent. Traffic congestion. So, we are adding two passenger trains an hour. These passenger trains are about 900 feet long, compared to a freight train, which could be anywhere from 7,500 to 10,000 feet, which equates to about 2 to 2 and 1/2 miles. Our trains are very similar to the Tri-Rail trains that are operating on a, on the Tri-Rail corridor. It takes less than 50 seconds for the gates to go down, for the train to pass, and then for the gates to go back up. Compared to a typical traffic signal in the state of Florida, which is anywhere from a minute and a half to three minutes, our, our system will have no significant impact on traffic congestion along the east coast of Florida. The Federal Railroad Administration actually conducted what's called an environmental assessment, where we received a finding of no significant impact of January of 2013, and they did found, find that the addition of those two trains per hour would not impact traffic. I might also add that, you know, two trains, less than 50 seconds, an hour, what that means is that if you are traversing or using the FEC, you have a less than 97% chance of ever encountering a passenger train. And in the case that you do, your wait time is less than 50 seconds. And then Tiger Grant to connect the South Florida Rail Corridor and the FEC corridor. So, you know, the number-one thing that we hear is, is the impact of the long-haul freight trains. One important thing that was done last year in September was the U.S. Department of Transportation actually awarded a $14 million Tiger Grant to the state to connect the South Florida Rail Corridor and the FEC corridor in two places. That is in Iris, which is just around Hialeah, near the FEC's rail yard. The second location is in Northwood, which is just in northwest Palm Beach. What that means is that when those two connections are completed, and that project is fully funded and expected to be operational around 2018 to 2020, is that the long-haul freight trains that are coming south from Jacksonville and going into the port or going into FEC's rail yard, and then the trains coming out of Port Miami and going north to Jacksonville to be distributed for the rest of the country, that up to 12 of those freight trains could actually be shifted to the South Florida Rail Corridor. FECR, as I mentioned, was a funding partner, and they continue to have discussions with CSX and FDOT on what that freight redistribution will look like. So, I'll close with impact, benefits to Boynton Beach. Increased tourism and hospitality opportunities. You know, Jonathan Porges from the Boynton Beach Chamber is here. Boynton Beach Chamber represents more than 500 business organizations. Just last week, they passed a resolution of support for the project, recognizing that All Aboard Florida definitely will bring positive benefits to the city of increased tourism, as well as economic development. I mentioned our rail and infrastructure investment accelerates the expansion of commuter rail. Again, a more efficient railroad, including the creation of quiet zones and upgrades to every single grade crossing along the corridor. And then one of the most important things is the coordination that we've actually been doing with your city on planned improvements, like the installation of sidewalks. Our operations planner has been working very closely with Jeff Livergood for months now on, you know, the city's request to actually add five sidewalks, or sidewalks to five of your grade crossings. We are doing a free design on that. We are also helping with your construction management, and then you are also leveraging the mobilization of our crew actually being out there in the corridor. So what that means to the city is about a more than 20% cost savings than if All Aboard Florida actually wasn't out in the corridor doing that work today. We are also going to be working with the MPO and the city as we build the grade crossing infrastructure improvements, so that that is done at the same time, so that there are less impacts to motorists and pedestrians who actually have to use those crossings. So with that, I would definitely like to close, and welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We're going to let the commission ask questions, and then we'll go to the public. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is that you said that you'll apply for a $1.6 billion loan?
Correct.
Okay, what if, I don't like to use the word "if," it don't materialize, what's the game plan then?
What, what if what?
Your loan don't come through?
So then we would go back to the private market. A RIF loan is just one of many financing options that the project is considering.
Okay.
It is not, it does not dictate whether the project moves forward or not.
How many options you're looking at now?
Multiple.
Okay, you said multiple. I'm not trying to be facetious. Is it 5, 6, 20, 30?
We are not disclosing the other funding options that we are going after, but I can tell you that the RIF option is just one of them.
Okay. I'm through.
Ms. Merker.
Simply, my understanding is that it's a done deal already, meaning that you will be going forward. Basically, what you're doing is basically educating people and cities, and there's not even a question, meaning that there is no vote that will be taken or needed for you to move forward. So what I'm saying is, I believe, and I'll use the word "contract," the contract is completed. It's just a matter of really just educating, and yes, if you can get these loans, which will help you.
So we do have the environmental approvals in place to build the Miami to West Palm Beach segment. As I mentioned, we received a finding of no significant impact from the Federal Railroad Administration in January of 2013. So we are going to begin construction, and actually, just several miles from here, in Boca and then in Hypoluxo, is the new rail that we've actually already ordered and are going to start laying within the corridor for the double-tracking. We are in the midst of what's called an environmental impact statement process. That process is actually analyzing the complete system from Miami to Orlando. The FRA is leading that environmental process. We expect the draft EIS document to be published very soon. That document will actually dictate the impacts and then proposed mitigation measures for the project from the West Palm Beach section north, because from West Palm Beach south, that's actually already been determined. Yes.
Let me just say one more time, simply. The people, the citizens of the state of Florida, really have no say, that's what I'm getting at. It's a done deal already. Am I wrong or right?
I would tell you that we continue to work through the EIS process.
That's not an answer. That's not an answer. Is it a done deal?
So what we're doing is, we're actually committed on, on developing this project and mitigating the proposed impacts as they occur. We own the corridor, we have the land that's needed to operate the system, so that we are moving forward with our plans while going through the environmental review process.
So it's a done deal, and no matter what the people may think, want, desire, it's still a done deal. The answer is yes or no?
She can't answer that.
She could. She doesn't want to.
No, she can't. She gave you the answer she had.
No, that wasn't an answer. Listen to what she said. It wasn't an answer. It was an invasive answer.
Okay, I just have a couple of.
I think he's gonna, Jose's gonna add something.
Let me just clarify something. So, the EIS process, my name is Jose Gonzalez, Senior Vice President of Florida East Coast Industries. The EIS process is required for the loan process we were talking about. If there is no federal loan, there is no EIS process. We will go through one of our other funding mechanisms, and we would proceed with the project. So, we don't say it's a done deal, because we're still taking in public input. So it's not to say that the input that we receive, we don't make changes based on that, because we have. We actually have made changes based on working with the marine industry, for example, working with different cities, with your own city on some of the grade crossings. But the actual project, when you say, the project self-moving forward, yes, the project is moving forward, but it doesn't mean that input is not still being sought out. If we weren't here seeking input, we wouldn't be here. So that's a, it's a reality that we still want to hear from the public. We want to hear. to hear from the public. We want to hear good and bad comments, and we want to make sure that anything that could be addressed, it can be addressed, because it's still in the implementation stage. So, we really want to hear the input. So, we never classify everything as a done deal. The project is moving forward, but we still would like to have the input of both the council and the citizens.
I have three little questions, I think, not big. They're big, but it's the entire trip, say, from Miami to Orlando was about three hours. You said, do you have an estimate of time from West Palm Beach to Orlando?
It's, sorry, it's under two hours.
Under two hours. Okay, thank you. You mentioned that it could be a positive tourism effect on Boynton. How do we arrive at that, saying there's no stop near Boynton? How does the tourists, how will that affect Boynton?
So, I would use Jorge Pescara, who is the Executive Director and President of Discover the Palm Beaches. His example is Palm Beach International, you know, located in the city of West Palm Beach. Does it benefit every city in the county? It sure does, because once people get off at the airport, they don't stay at the airport. They traverse throughout the region. They actually go into Martin County. They go down into Broward County. And it's how do we work with the city? How do we already start working with the chamber and your marketing and tourism development to actually attract people to the city? So it has to be a partnership effort. It's not just a one-sided on All Aboard Florida, but we have to work with the city. I'll use the example, when my colleague presented to the city of Boca Raton Tourism Council, their first question for her was, how do we advertise in your backseat magazine so that people actually know that there's a Boca Raton on the corridor?
Okay. One last question. Say that everything goes as planned. When do you expect the first date of actually operation?
So the Miami to West Palm Beach segment will be operational by the end of 2016, and the extension to Orlando will be operational by early 2017.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Casello.
I find it a little troubling when you're asking to borrow $1.6 billion of taxpayer dollars, you won't divulge your other funding sources. So I find that a little troublesome. Your ridership, what do you, how many people do you plan on riding this train?
Millions.
1 million, 2 million, 10 million?
A million.
We have not released our ridership study, but we know that there are more than 500 million trips that are taken between the four destinations along the corridor, combined with Florida having more than 19.5 million people and more than 95 million people actually visiting the state. We know that there is a robust demand for this service, and we definitely plan on capturing it.
All right. So, let me get this straight. You're not divulging your other funding sources? You're not divulging your ridership estimate numbers? Is that correct?
So we have divulged them to the Federal Railroad Administration, and they're reviewing them with our loan application.
But you're asking, you're asking us to buy into this program, and I'm not saying it's a bad program, but why would those numbers be secretive?
It's just part of our business model that we've decided not to disclose.
Which concerns me. When you're asking us to buy into something, and you're not divulging all the information, that, I mean, it's not a rocket scientist's recipe here.
This is also, I mean, this is also a privately funded project that's operating on privately-owned land.
Well, it's not going to be totally privately. You're asking my tax dollar, $1.6 billion, to help pay for it. So it's not, so it's not completely private. The other thing, give me a scenario, okay, how this helps Boynton Beach, because I've heard Miami, West Palm, Fort Lauderdale, West Palm, Orlando. I've heard 80 miles an hour going through Boynton Beach. So give me a scenario where somebody gets on a train in Miami, and it's helping my city, Boynton Beach.
So let's take a couple that comes, or a group of four that comes into Orlando to go to the theme parks for a week. So we work through your chamber and your tourism and Discover the Palm Beaches marketing department. They decide to extend their trip by a long weekend to come down to Palm Beach County. They get off, they take the train from Orlando to downtown West Palm Beach. Perhaps they rent a car. Perhaps we actually pick them up in our service, because we'll be offering door-to-door service, and we take them to one of your hotels that are located on the beach, and they spend a weekend here. Perhaps the commuter rail system is up and running. So that family of four then comes into the West Palm Beach station. They literally walk across the platform to the commuter rail stop, hop on a commuter rail train, and they're in downtown Boynton Beach, where they can enjoy dinner, enjoy nightlife, go back to West Palm Beach, go back to Orlando, stay in Boynton for a weekend. So it's really on how do we work together to actually market the system, so that it benefits not only Miami, Fort Lauderdale, West Palm, and Orlando, but all of the cities along the corridor. And if we don't work together, it's simply not going to happen.
Let me ask you another question. With the troubles that Amtrak has and Tri-Rail trying to stay financially feasible, what makes your project financially feasible?
So, first off, Tri-Rail is a commuter rail project that offers a totally different price point. It's also, you know, located to the west of I-95. So we will be located along the eastern coast of Florida that will connect the densely populated and urban areas where millions of people are traveling today. The Amtrak service that operates between Orlando and Miami is a once-a-day service. It takes anywhere from five to seven hours. That is definitely not the type of passenger that All Aboard Florida is attracting. Anyone that would take five to seven hours to take a train is, you know, a leisure traveler. We're attracting these business travelers that need to get to these downtown destinations in a set amount of time, and then the tourist traveler that wants to take that amenity into south or central Florida.
And just closing, personally, I see this a great, great asset for Disney World. I see people getting on at all these stops and heading right up to the magical kingdom. That's where I think this is all going. That's my own personal opinion.
I would, I would say that, that the, that the Palm Beach County Hotel and Lodging Association, Greater Miami Day Chamber, Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, Greater Fort Lauderdale Convention and Visitors Bureau, actually all respectfully disagree, because they have overwhelmingly endorsed the project and believe that it actually will bring more tourism opportunities to South Florida.
Respectfully.
Respectfully.
Patrick?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and then after public audience, I'd like to make a short statement. All right. One of my first concerns is the second environmental impact statement from Cocoa over to Orlando. I'm concerned about habitat fragmentation. What route, are you following a road? Is it beside a road?
We are. We are utilizing the existing State Road 528 corridor. So we are operating, again, within a dedicated right-of-way that already is, offers a transportation solution. So yes, we are looking to implement the project with the least environmental impacts as possible.
In the discussion for, thank you. In discussion for commuter rail, do you have a timeline, like four years, five years, two years?
I would use SFRTA's most recent presentation. They actually believe that they can implement the project at a capital cost of about $750 to $800 million by 2020. Compared to before All Aboard Florida actually existed, that capital cost was about $1.5 to $2.5 billion operational by 2040. So you can see the difference in their timeframe from before and after All Aboard Florida.
Does your, do the studies indicate that there's any, there's room for two commuters? Would this put Tri-Rail out of business?
So, our systems are complementary with Tri-Rail. For example, it would take about two hours to travel between downtown Miami and downtown West Palm Beach compared to our hour trip. Again, our price point will be much different than Tri-Rail, and we actually signed a non-compete with Tri-Rail earlier this year to make sure that the systems are actually complementary with each other in the corridor. And our staffs meet with the Tri-Rail and DOT staffs monthly to actually determine how the systems can work together and coexist.
I understand All Aboard Florida doesn't compete with Tri-Rail. I'm talking about in, say, 2020, when there's, if you go commuter route on this?
Well, we would not be operating the commuter. That would be an extension. Like, SFRTA is looking at extending, extending their service into the FEC.
So that would be Tri-Rail running on two tracks?
Correct. And I can give your city manager, Amy Godot's number, who she knows, and I would definitely suggest that they come and present an update to the commission as well.
Following up under Vice Mayor Casello's, when he's talking about Disney World, that seems like I read somewhere that a lot of the management for All Aboard Florida originally worked in, at Disney. Is that correct?
That is correct. And they were hired because they can actually focus on what is the guest experience that our transportation, that our transportation option will be offering.
That's all.
Just before we call the public, you know, I don't want anybody to do the math, but I lived in Boynton long enough when we had two tracks for the FEC, and we went to one, now we're going back to two, and I find it kind of like ironic, but don't nobody do the math. I'm that old. I remember when two tracks was over there.
Can I, can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
The reason they tore up one track is because the state of Florida went to a different, my understanding, this was Harvey Oyer told me, they went to a different taxing system. So they, they charged them on the number of miles they had of track, and since they had doubled the track, it doubled their tax, so they took one out.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Fitzpatrick is older than I am now.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and let anybody in the public just ask a question. Please line up there.
David Floaring, 417 Northeast Sixth Avenue, also on the Railroad Avenue, corner Railroad and Northeast Sixth. I have a technical question. Looking at the FEC railroad tracks, there's a bottleneck of the track property that starts at Ocean Avenue and runs to the canal where they only own 50 feet. How are they going to address that? Because by their own safety standards, it has to be 150 feet. And if they're going to have to, they acquire a property, a private company can't do it through eminent domain, they have to purchase it, correct?
Let them answer that.
So, so we, we own 100 feet throughout the corridor. There are pinch points where 50 feet, but two tracks do fit on 50 feet.
Safely?
Yes, sir.
I don't know about that.
Well, these plans will be reviewed by the Federal Railroad Administration and by the Florida Department of Transportation. So, their standards and 50 feet accommodates two tracks.
Well, several property owners along Railroad Avenue are already considering a lawsuit against the whole project if they move forward with it, just because I can't see how you can have a train going 80 miles an hour 10 feet away from my building.
Daniel Spotts, 805 North Federal Highway in Boynton Beach. As a local business owner with property next to the FEC railroad, I would like to express my concerns and opposition to the proposed All Aboard Florida plans. I do not see any benefit to the people of Boynton. There are a lot of costs. From a technical point of view, the FEC railroad tracks are not designed to handle passenger trains, especially high-speed ones. In the case of Tri-Rail, it took years to build a second track and upgrade the original CSX freight lines to hold passenger traffic. During that time, the ride was slow and uncomfortable. But now we already have passenger service that already goes from Miami to Orlando with local service in between on the CSX tracks. From a practical view, the FEC railroad cuts right through the heart of Boynton Beach. The average 12 freight trains per day are already highly disruptive. The plans for All Aboard call for a doubling of freight trains to 24, plus an additional 32 high-speed passenger trains. That doesn't count this Tri-Rail stuff they're talking about. But Boynton will not be even a whistle stop on this line, though we may be stuck with a whistle. If Boynton is willing to contribute some money, All Aboard Florida will pay for so-called quiet zone upgrades. On I-95, a quiet zone means large concrete barriers to deflect the sound of cars and tracks traveling at high speeds, 70, 80, 90 miles an hour. For All Aboard, a quiet zone simply means that they will not blow their warning horns as much, but the trains will still be noisy as they pass. On I-95, nearly every foot of the road is protected with fencing to prevent animals or people from wandering onto the roadway. There are no such plans for All Aboard Florida. If the trains are forced to stop due to debris, accidents, or suicides, and this has happened on Tri-Rail, the results could be disastrous. There is only one fire EMS unit location east of the FEC railroad in Boynton Beach. The closest hospital on the east side is Good Samaritan in West Palm Beach. I would urge the commission to have city people evaluate the effect on Boynton Beach, especially fire rescue and EMS, on their ability to serve not only the Boynton residents, but the other communities such as Ocean Ridge that they're contracted to serve. It should also be noted that the properties between the FEC railroad and the CSX railroad have the lowest assessed values in Boynton Beach. Although much of the land along the FEC railways is zoned light industrial or commercial, the commission has spent millions of CRA tax money to encourage mixed-use retail and luxury residential units downtown. I suggest that the close proximity to the railroad was the major reason the original developers of the Promenade, the Arches, and Los Ventanas had problems or simply went bankrupt. The Compton development further west on Congress, by comparison, had no such problems during a similar time period. Most of the downtown Boynton remains vacant land, abandoned or empty storefronts, cemeteries, memorials to dead people, and of course, our high school across the street. If you allow this All Aboard Florida expansion to occur, I fear you will drive a stake through the heart of any successful development east of I-95. We should be addressing, attempting to eliminate the FEC railway tracks or force them underground if you really want this downtown to develop. Many All Aboard officials are trying to convince politicians and the public that this is a done deal. As a private railway on tracks that are older than Boynton Beach, there is the implication that there is nothing you can do to stop this. But I want to remind you that these tracks are on land that belongs to the people of the state of Florida. They own lease rights, but they don't own the land, on most of those. As a corporation, All Aboard Florida itself is relatively young. It is also highly dependent on over $1 billion in federal government loans. Those loans are in turn dependent on an environmental impact statement that has not yet been completed, which should describe the full negative impact on the people of Boynton Beach. I urge you to use this time to educate yourself and the public on how seriously bad this project is. Starting next year, the FEC can no longer carry hazardous cargo without very expensive upgrades caused positive train control, as the young lady mentioned. There is, these are the same upgrades required for passenger trains. The CSX Tri-Rail Amtrak lines already have these improvements in place. I believe that this entire All Aboard plan is an effort to pay for these expensive upgrades using bond money and federal loans that the FEC doesn't cosign for. If All Aboard succeeds, FEC makes money. If it fails, the FEC is protected from most losses and probably gets to keep the leasehold improvements. But none of this benefits Boynton Beach at all, so I urge you to look carefully at it. And if I can make one other comment about the politics of it, yes, you have mostly development people with very little experience in running a railroad at All Aboard Florida. Most of them are Disney people, as you mentioned. The governor, when he first came to office, blocked high-speed rail going from Tampa to Orlando, said it wasn't necessary. His advisor, his railroad advisor, was an All Aboard lobbyist. Now he's chief of staff for the governor. We don't know what's going to happen if the governor loses this election to this whole plan. So I urge you to educate yourself. It's not a done deal. The environmental impact statement requires public input. So I urge you to look at it very carefully. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lillian Mayhew, 114 Southwest Third Court, Boynton Beach, Florida. Apparently, the All Aboard Florida really doesn't care who they bulldoze over or who they destroy in their, their mission to set this up. My family owns a property, a house, directly next to the railroad track. As it is, the noise is mind-blowing. Not only the horns, but the wind, just the clicking, the, the whole deal of the noise of the train going by. They're going to put the new track on the west side of the existing track. At that point, we will be able to put our hand out the kitchen window and high-five people as they're going by. That's how close it will be. This will destroy the property value. The value of that property is dropping like a rock. So they really don't care who they bulldoze to put this in. Like you say, it's a done deal. There's nothing we can do about it. But if they'd like to buy the properties of the people along that track and give us a reasonable value for it, well, that's something I think I and some of the people would be interested in listening to. But it's really not fair to take out people that have spent their life savings to provide a house, and the railroad comes in, and those property values have, have dropped substantially because of this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Martin, 1550 Vita Pepe, Boynton Beach. I guess I would just like to focus on the fact that All Aboard Florida would offer a great deal of connectivity between Fort Lauderdale, West Palm Beach, and Miami, and soon after that, Orlando. As a college student, I recently graduated with my MBA, and I've had a really hard time finding a job, and I really feel limited geographically to a job, you know, mainly in West Palm Beach and maybe Fort Lauderdale. But having the added benefit of being able to be connected to Miami and Fort Lauderdale in more an efficient manner would definitely help me out. And, you know, and at least with my generation, the millennial generation, you know, we focus, we would be, you know, very... we would be, you know, very opt to promoting mass transit, and hopping on a train from Boynton Beach to West Palm, just to be able to hop on this All Aboard Florida train down to Miami to be able to get to work, you know, it'd be much more efficient, I really feel like it would open up a lot more opportunities, not just for myself, but for anyone who would like to be able to have employment opportunity or any type of travel opportunities within the track here in the area and as well as Orlando. So I think, you know, just having the added connectivity is just a huge benefit economically for not just Fort Lauderdale, Miami, and West Palm, but obviously, Boca could, you know, be very close to Fort Lauderdale within a short visit. In Boynton Beach, you know, I would definitely get on a train from Boynton to West Palm to be down to Miami, so I think it's a great benefit, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what All Aboard Florida can offer in the near future. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alan Schlossberg, I live in Delray Beach, I also own property here in Boynton Beach. This is an example of Florida All Aboard and the public be damned. You were concerned about development earlier and some traffic issues. I can tell you that if this thing ever goes through, we're gonna have a traffic nightmare, so you need to really keep that in mind. Florida All Aboard is planning a very costly double and triple track system to run 32 high-speed passenger trains and 14 to 18 freight trains, some being 2 and 1/2 miles long, together with some 26 to 50 Tri-Rail trains along the East Coast tracks from Miami to Orlando, and all these trains are running 24/7. We already have passenger service, as been indicated. We have Amtrak, Tri-Rail, and we also have CSX freight on the west tracks, and with many more stops than the few stops that All Aboard Florida's plan would make. In fact, the whole project doesn't really make much sense. There is a basic question of who would ride this service, and I think it's interesting that...
Excuse me, you all are touching the light, that's why we're going off up here. Not that we mind. Thank you.
So there is a basic question here as to who would ride this All Aboard Florida passenger service, and it's interesting that they have not released their survey, and I wonder why they failed to release their survey. To me, that's, you know, an indication of some problems that they're not putting forth at this point. Florida is, Florida All Aboard is also a junk bond rated program, paying 12 and 1/2 percent interest and financed by a New York hedge fund. And with that, it's a fairly risky program, certainly one that if the feds are thinking of funding this, they should really have some second thoughts about this, because I don't think it's a very good investment. And certainly, the last thing that this Obama administration would need would be to have another funding failure. The total cost for this project is somewhere around $2.5 billion, and there's a tremendous amount of money certainly involved in this. But, you know, aside from all the money stuff and the differences in all the trains and everything else, the most important aspect of this is the entire plan is that will affect the quality of life for millions of East Coast residents. And that's really the key issue here, because with this traffic gridlock that you just can't imagine, with all these trains traveling 24/7 and the vibrations and everything else that goes along with it, it's gonna reduce the property value, there's no question about it. And with the property values that are being reduced, you're gonna have a reduction in the income from taxes, the income from tourism, and a host of other things. In addition to that, you know, there's some real serious concerns here about this gridlock. Consider an emergency vehicle trying to get through, you know, backed up in a line waiting for the gates to go up or the bridge to go up. So, you know, there might be an issue here in terms of real safety, lives meaning sometimes a minute or two could make a difference in being able to save someone's life. I think that Florida All Aboard, and there's an organization called Florida Not All Aboard, that has collected some 29,000 signatures and 29 resolutions from different towns, and I think that it's really important to note that, because people do not want this project. It's really gonna be a white elephant and a disaster, and hopefully, it won't be realized. But we ask the commissioners and the people that we're in contact with to also join us, sign a petition, talk to the elected officials that you know, and also put forth a resolution also objecting to this program. Thank you.
Yes?
Are we, are we gonna have a three-minute timing or not?
Well, I haven't imposed it yet, so I'm hoping they'll make their point, but if they get it, if they start going too long, it's not fair now to do it.
All right. I just have two questions. This is Harry Woodworth, I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place, which is east of Federal and halfway between Boynton Beach and Gateway. I get to listen to the four hoots at pretty much all four crossings down through there right now. I just have two questions. All this stuff about the quiet zones, will every crossing in Boynton Beach be a quiet zone when this thing starts? Just a simple question.
That's my understanding, yes.
And that's all, that's 100%?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody in the newspaper needs to write that down, because so far, there's been a circle around that. There's funding, there's money from here, there's this and that, it's given that every crossing in Boynton Beach will be quiet.
That's what I'm told.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Casey Trailer, 622 Southwest Pine Tree Lane, Palm City, and I founded Florida Not All Aboard. I just want to address a couple of things Ms. Sewell had said, that the freight and All Aboard Florida are two separate companies. Florida East Coast Industries, Florida East Coast Railway, All Aboard Florida, they all fall under Fortress Investment Group that hedge fund in New York City. They're really kind of all one and the same. If All Aboard Florida goes away, that second track in the corridor still is gonna benefit the freight side. Just want to keep that in mind. Secondly, floridanotallaboard.com, if you go to the website tomorrow, interestingly enough, at 6 o'clock, I'll have a radio show with a financial expert on that'll talk about other funding methods for All Aboard Florida, so that may be an interesting show to tune into. All Aboard Florida is not a done deal, and it is not privately funded. All Aboard Florida recently sold $400 million worth of junk bonds at a rating of 12 to 12 and 3/4 percent. It was simply an equity play for the buyers. Now, this private company is asking for public funds to the tune of $1.6 billion for a business that has not proven profitable in decades. Reportedly, in part, they want this loan to pay off those very junk bonds. This is over $1 billion more than any other RIF loan granted in history. All Aboard Florida is ultimately owned by Fortress Investment Group. Do you want to gamble your hard-earned tax dollars on a hedge fund that claims they've found that magic formula that no one else in North America has been able to, and that's create a profitable passenger rail line? And I will provide you some documentation about the Acela line they brought up, it is not profitable. All Aboard Florida claims they will move up to 12,800 bodies between Miami and Disney every day, yet they haven't provided their business plan, ridership studies, or ticket prices to the public. Does anyone remember the Florida Fun Train? Fun Train ran five days a week between Fort Lauderdale and Orlando, and three days a week between Orlando and Tampa. It offered passengers entertainment movies, virtual reality arcade games, a tiki bar, and a 50's style themed diner. This was back in 1998. The company hoped to lure those 13 million vacationers who drive between Florida or between Orlando and South Florida every year. The claim sounds all too familiar, as we're now hearing it again from All Aboard Florida. However, Fun Train had trouble attracting passengers from the start. It went out of business in just 11 months. It reminds me of a quote from Albert Einstein you may be familiar with, insanity, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. But there is a difference. This time, they're fronting the project with our tax dollars, not private money like the Fun Train. Amtrak between Miami and Orlando reported a loss of $46 million in 2013. Tri-Rail between Miami and PBI, $87 million. Of the three passenger train services, All Aboard Florida seems to be competing to see who can lose the most taxpayer dollars. How can it make sense to add another business when the ones that are here cannot operate on a profit? How can anyone believe this hedge fund has figured out the magic formula? Florida Not All Aboard was founded seven months ago, and it was brought here to bring awareness about All Aboard Florida and to change the course of All Aboard Florida. Please join over 27,000 other people in seven months that have signed our petition against All Aboard Florida roaring through our communities, and as so many people have noted, it does bisect most of our communities with no benefit to many of us. Encourage your elected officials to join over 30 other communities and organizations that have signed a resolution against the impacts and the use of taxpayer funding. All Aboard Florida will pay for increased, ask All Aboard Florida who will pay for the increased maintenance fees for years to come, and that would be a good question for you folks. In Martin County, the average cost to maintain our intersections is $60,000. They project once you double-track the system, it's gonna cost $120,000. The latest estimate they got from All Aboard Florida for a maintenance was $100,000. When double-tracked, it'll be $200,000. This is something you also need to be aware of if you're paying to maintain your intersections. Taxpayers are forced to pay for this, All Aboard Florida just sends them the bill. This is far from a private company that is privately funded. Please be informed, share your petition or our petition, and write your elected officials from the local level all the way up to President Obama. Thank you, united we can make a difference.
Good evening, my name's Philip McGaddam, I live in Jensen Beach, and I'm a member of All Aboard Flor, not Florida, not All Aboard. First of all, I'd like to ask the commission to look at a video to see how we're gonna transform homes by adding trains. I own property, I own property, that house was a $600,000 house before the crash in 2008. The values just started coming back about a year and a half ago, we saw a lot sell in there for $100,000, we hadn't had a sale in there since 2006. So I decided to go down and clear the lot we had and see if we could sell it. One lot sold for $104,000, so we put our lot up at $100,000, because we had a water view, and it wasn't a water view. Back in April, I had an offer on the property, in March. In April, the buyer withdrew his offer because he heard about All Aboard Florida, because we're 1,000 feet from the railroad tracks. Since then, one lot sold for $74,000, another lot for $60,000. Now I've gone to St. Lucie and got an abatement on taxes in 2008, and what do you think I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go back there and get another abatement. And that's what's gonna happen to every county. It's unbelievable when you say, is it a done deal, that they can look at the impact they put on people and say it's a done deal. This is outrageous. This state is gonna lose more tax dollars. I worked for a big real estate company in Boston, and we used their, we would buy commercial properties, improve them, they would turn them into automotive centers. My boss would go into a property and say, that property doesn't meet the fix, because it joins a rural, a rural community with homes. He'd buy it, he'd get a variance, he'd change it to residential property. He said, we're not gonna do that to the community. They've had no representation to the community at all. I feel bad about my property, but this man here is paying $6,000 a year in taxes, to have 50 trains go behind his house, it's contemptible to me. They haven't even approached that. And tonight, I understood when you asked, is this a done deal, how arrogant this is, how anybody could get this far in the process without having an impact study. Me, as a private guy, if I went out, I wouldn't get the first base here without an impact study if I wanted to put a gas station here. I'm asking you, please, to look at this seriously, look at what's gonna happen to the tax revenue. St. Lucie County has a tax resolution, people down there, they're crazing them and dropping the taxes. There's no upside to this, and they haven't approached this with any other way other than in arrogance. I finally gave my property to a broker, and I normally don't use brokers, I sell everything myself, but now I'm gonna take all my time, to spend all my time, to fight against this project, and I hope that you people do the same thing, there's no upside to it. And I'd like you to ask them one other question. From Miami to Orlando, how much is that ticket? How much is it for a family of four to go from Miami to Orlando? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have that answer?
They didn't, they said they didn't.
They didn't put out their fares yet. They answered that earlier.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vince Meyer from Stewart, Florida, I'm with Florida Not All Aboard. I would like to go through a little bit of history first, before I have my say about the rest of this. Flagler Railroad to Miami was completed in 1896. In 1904, Flagler decided to extend his railroad to Key West, Florida. After being built, the total cost of that was $50 billion, and in today's evaluation, it would add up to $1.3 billion, all from Flagler's personal fortune. While being built, hurricanes in 1906, 1909, and 1910 destroyed a lot of the progress along the way to the final completion in 1912. In 1935, a Labor Day hurricane washed away about 40 miles of the rail line, also the long Key fishing camp, along with FEC rescue train, and many lives. FEC was not interested in repairing the rail line, because it never repaid its construction cost. Now, along comes AAF, wanting to use taxpayers' money through a government RIF loan to the tune of $1.6 billion. I believe that any private company asking for a loan of our tax dollars has no business suing in court to block from the public the releasing of its revenue study, which contains ridership, financial information, and more, which must be very sensitive information, which they don't want revealed. I have attended several commission meetings along the Florida coast, and I've heard what I believe was a lot of false promises to the public, saying, maybe in the future, they would have stops at their cities. If they put in all the stops I heard them promise, it would be a slow speed train to Orlando, Florida. The real kicker to these promises are that the public along the route do not want any passenger trains like 32 a day. Let's face it, the public knows that AAF stands for All About Freight, all that freight coming into the port of Miami from the Panama Canal. AAF wants to use our tax dollars to make this transition along the coast, so when the passenger train fails, they will have everything in place to move all this freight up the coast rail line to other states, all while destroying our local businesses, our way of life as we know it, along with the danger of blocking our roads and waterways, normal road crossings, traffic along emergency equipment, public trying to get to hospitals with emergencies. We do not want passenger trains for collateral of our tax dollars.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Gary Williams, 1499 South Federal Highway, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. I have three businesses, one at the, one at the Fort Lauderdale Airport, one at the Miami Airport, and one at the West Palm Beach Airport. And... and one at the West Palm Beach Airport. And we need high-speed rail. Now, people may have varying points of views on the particulars of high-speed rail, but I'm here to ride on the horse that's on the track right now. And I live right down the street, half a block from here. I live within 50 feet of the tracks, and I have had... The problem with the train that close to me is negligible. I have suffered no ill effects from being that close to the railroad tracks. Now, I understand the volume of traffic will be increased, but I'm all for progress, and I'm all for the ability of people to go beyond where they are right now and get to it, get to it. This... I think this state needs high-speed rail. In six years, I'll be 73 years old. I do not want to be traveling down 95 to the various locations of my businesses as 20-year-olds on motorcycles are zipping past me doing 100 miles an hour. You know, and anybody that lives around here knows what I'm talking about. So there's got to be another way. You know, I've been driving now for 55 years. I would like to be able to take rail from here to Orlando in a couple of hours. That would be a good ride for me, especially when I hit the age of 73. I would like to be able to do that and relax without having to use my car all the time and not take a day and a half to get anywhere. So I will trust that you're going to dot the i's and cross the t's and do whatever it takes to get some high-speed rail somewhere for some people and also provide some jobs for the people in this state that can... And in this city that could use the work. Thank you.
Sir, since you made mention of your businesses, you wouldn't mind telling us what type of business you're in?
Well, I have a cleaning service. I have an Avis Rent-A-Car business in Georgia, and I have a cleaning service at the Avis Budget offices here at the airports that I mentioned.
Thank you.
You're welcome. How you doing? Tim McTag, Northeast Fourth Avenue, 130 Northeast Fourth Avenue. I walk down there, okay? And I'm getting a little bit older, you know, and the extra congestion, I mean, the extra congestion these guys are going to be driving through there is no benefit to me. I don't want $1 of my tax money to pay for this stuff. And as for the... I don't know if you've ever been down there at night, but do you ever see the dust kick up by those trains? And that hurts my lungs, so I got to use my inhaler. Other than that, I don't see no benefit in it. I ain't getting no money out of that and putting it in my pocket.
Dr. Blas, 113 West Tara Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. To begin with, and I want the train people to listen carefully, a few years ago, I was teaching at DeVry University in Orlando and trying to commute from Boynton. And I'm a math professor. They thought I was a truck driver on the turnpike. So it was very, very difficult. So my initial reaction to having a rail connection between here and Orlando is positive. However, the comments I heard from the residents are very, very disturbing, and I am urging that All Aboard Florida people to take that serious into account. Unless you can assure this city that you will take care of these objections, no way will this city support you. There is just no way of that. Also, a couple of things, and this is not really funny to the young lady who presented, we do not have any hotels on the oceans here. You're mistaken. Boynton does not have hotels on the ocean, so your impression that people will be commuting to those is incorrect. You need to know our city better. On the other hand, Boynton is a very important city, and I think it is somewhat arrogant of you to come here and tell us that you're going to zip 80 miles an hour through our city. If you want to come here seriously, tell us that the train would stop here, and even then, we will be very, very careful in adopting it. I am well-known in this city. I'm one of the pioneers of the web in this country, and I'm also running for governor. I'm in the election. I would welcome all the other candidates, Scott and Chris, to come and debate me about the virtues of that train. As it is now, it is not acceptable. It may be modified. Also, so you don't think I am some kind of old-fashioned, you know, person, you may know that Elon Musk is now proposing a hypertrain, one that may be going 700 miles an hour. And that will all happen in the 21st century. Also, since you mentioned Henry Flagler, who is kind of sacred to me, Kimberly Flagler was my student at Palm Beach Atlantic. I know the family somewhat. Let me remind you that Henry Flagler's vision was to connect New York all the way to Key West. If you're serious, take your little detour to Orlando, but remember that Flagler wanted to go to New York. So in a way, let me be honest with you. You have something, but you need to be totally honest with the public, disclose your surveys, disclose your prices, and then talk to me. And as I said, and I want... By the way, Atiya is not here today because she just had a baby, mazel tov. Can we all have a hand for Atiya?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, she just had a baby, the young lady from San Sentinel. But I hope the Palm Beach will report that Dr. Blas is inviting all the governor candidates to debate the train and to do the right thing. Thank you.
Dr. Blas, just one quick question. How fast was that train going to go in the 21st century?
700 miles.
Since I have an opinion of being a science fiction guy, I want to tell you, Elon Musk, the guy who started PayPal and SpaceX, he's talking about trains going 700 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As that wind down though, All Aboard, I have something to speak about not on the agenda. I'm Minister Bernard Wright at 713 Northwest Second Street, Boynton Beach, to appease any curiosity. I have the glasses on. I just had two major surgeries in my eyes. I want to talk about three points tonight. I want some dialogue on it, not on advisement. And the first point is...
This is about All Aboard Florida?
No, no.
Oh, well, then you have to wait.
That's what I was asking you, whether this...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to wait.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning. My office is at 508 East Boynton Beach Boulevard. When I give directions, I say, "Take Boynton Beach Boulevard to the railroad tracks," and that's where I'm at. I'm here in support of All Aboard in three different categories. One, as a land planner, also as a business owner, and third, as a resident. As a land planner, we're always looking for alternative means of transportation, and I think what All Aboard is doing is a start of what could be something in the future where the commuter train can run and connect the cities along Palm Beach County and along the way. There's been discussion, in fact, in the presentation, it was made that the advancement of the improvements that they're putting in will help expedite the process of the commuter train, which I think is a great way of providing an alternative means of transportation from all the cities along the coastline here. As a business owner standpoint, my office, I look out the window and I look at the train go by every day. My window is about 100 feet from the tracks. I'll be happy to have the improvements of the tracks, the improvements of the quiet zones, no horns blowing, and experiencing quieter conditions if they move forward. The... An example I give is that if I'm on a conference call and use the speakerphone, I have to pick up the phone to avoid the conflict with the call when I'm doing it. Hopefully, that can be resolved as that moves forward. As a resident, I just bought a townhouse just outside of Boynton Beach in Chippiluxo in Barefoot Cove. I'm about 300 feet away from the railroad tracks. Didn't stop me from buying the home. In fact, as we moved in a couple of years ago, I was happy to be in a two-story. Hadn't been in a two-story for a while and thought, after about a month or two, I was used to the train going through at night, and said, "Hey, let's throw the window open. It's a nice evening." Until the horn blew, and both of us sat up straight in bed. So without the horn, that I'm also happy I'll be able to sleep a little better. But I'm here in support. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. John Deportis, Presidency of the Greater Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce. An independent study by TNS Travels America estimated that 6 million visitors came to Palm Beach County in 2013. This translates into millions of dollars in direct revenue and job creation in the tourism and supporting industries of our county. As the premier organization of choice representing and promoting the businesses, the business community, the Greater Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce strongly advocates for job creation and growth of our economy. Florida receives roughly 90 million visitors a year. The All Aboard Florida Project helps support the upward trend of tourism and economic growth at state, county, and city levels. Additionally, with the expedited creation of the commuter rail, excuse me, would help drive commerce directly into our city into Boynton Beach here. The Greater Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce mission is to connect business to everything that creates success, and that is why the Board of Directors lends its support to the All Aboard Florida Project. It is with great enthusiasm that we support this project and the endeavors of the All Aboard Florida. And I have copies for you.
Thank you. Do you need to speak?
My name's Tom Sutterfield. I'm a proud resident of Boynton Beach for the last 19 years. I live at 3848 Edgar Avenue, and I'm also a school board of Palm Beach County candidate for District Four. I'm not here to talk about All About Florida.
No, you need to wait till the next...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to have public audience right after this.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else need to speak about All Aboard Florida? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
I'm Lily May Hughes, Sr., and I live next to the FEC tracks. I bought... 21 years ago, I bought a duplex that I intended to live in half of it and use the other half as an income. However, through the years, I am now almost totally deaf. I may be hollering. Forgive me. Half the time I can't breathe, I'm coughing because of the soot I have to breathe every day with the train going by. They're talking about how they're not going to be putting any more trains on, any more cars. That's a lie. I sit there and count those cars, and they have it... Lately, they've had three engines and 175 cars. Normally, they had two engines and 150 cars. If this train goes through, people are going to die because there's four main crossings that you have to get across to get to the hospital. That's not fair. We're also entitled, according to the Constitution, to feel safe in our home. I do not feel safe in my home when I can't sleep without the plaster falling on my head. The tile in my kitchen and in my hallway is all cracked from the vibration of this train. They never maintain on the side of the tracks. I've had rats in my house, snakes in my garage. I have maintained the side of my duplex for 21 years at my expense. It's the only section in there that has been maintained. They're not required to, but if I don't mow my yard, the city can come and complain to me because I haven't mowed my yard. But they can have all kinds of debris, and they do nothing about it. When I first moved there, I had to ask them to move a lot of the railroad ties and things. This... I don't know why, they seem to think we need this train. We have a beautiful train in Amtrak. I've been on it before. I'm sure many of you have, and it's a delightful ride. And over there, you're not up against the neighbors. How many homes are going to be upset with this train if it goes through because they're coming closer and closer? I'm within 41 feet of my property line and the outer rail. If this train comes in, it would be coming over towards my duplex, and you can imagine how much worse it's going to be, not only for me, but other people along the line. It's just not fair. So I do hope that they are going to think twice about putting this train in, allowing it to go in. We should have a right to privacy and not have to have our lives turned upside down. It's wrong. It's just wrong. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Andine Constable. I live at 228 Southwest Sixth Avenue, 33435. I'm relatively new to Florida. I've lived here three years, and we just recently purchased our home here in Boynton Beach. And I don't know a lot about the history of the trains, but it has been mentioned to me by a friend who used to work as an engineer, civil engineer for the county, that there had been plans for a switch of Tri-Rail to the FEC line and the freight to the 95 corridor. So I'd like to know what is the status of that, because it does not make sense to have increased freight traffic through the heart of downtown Boynton or any of the coastal cities. And while there do seem to be some potential benefits, they're all potential. You know, if there's an increase in commuter rail, that would be something I'd be interested in. I have zero interest in going to Orlando. I might take a trip from West Palm to Orlando, I don't know, once in five years. So I have really no vested interest in having high-speed rail going through downtown Boynton. I have a great deal of vested interest in property value of our new home, which is just a few blocks from here. And I also would really like to see the potential of downtown Boynton. You know, it has a great deal of potential for foot traffic and shops and, you know, just the general upgrade of the potential of downtown. The quantity of All Aboard Florida trains plus the increase of freight trains when the Port Everglades, it just sounds like it would be a total death sentence to the future plans of Boynton.
Thank you.
So to talk about the freight service. So I mentioned the Tiger Grant to connect the South Florida Rail Corridor with the FEC Corridor. So in those two places, which would happen at the Hialeah-Iris connection and then in Northwood in Northwest Palm Beach, those freight trains that are coming south from Jacksonville and going north out of Port Miami could be diverted to the South Florida Rail Corridor, where they would bypass the downtown of Boynton Beach. So FECR is engaged in those discussions with the state. They were a funding partner in that Tiger Grant. So that project, like I mentioned, is currently funded, can be operational in 2018 and 2020. Amy Godot, who's also the Tri-Rail Coastal Link Project Manager, is a project manager for that project as well. The commuter rail project, so All Aboard Florida... Well, let me actually go back to the freight. I mentioned earlier that FECR will always serve customers on the Florida East Coast Railway. You know, they can increase their freight service tomorrow, and they don't have to implement quiet zones. They don't have to do anything. That is All Aboard Florida's investment. So quiet zones are becoming a reality because of the 60-plus million dollars that we are investing in the corridor and making these significant improvements. Those improvements will benefit you because you live next to the FEC. So neither freight trains nor passenger trains, and to the gentleman that asked earlier, will have to blow their horn. They will blow their horn if there's an emergency at like a trespasser on the tracks, but in most of all cases, train horns will be eliminated because the additional safety features will be included. I mentioned the commuter rail project, which Amy Godot could go into more information on, but I mean, our project by laying the double-tracking, upgrading the grade crossings, and... on, but I mean, our project by laying the double tracking, upgrading the grade crossings, installing positive terrain control and the new signalization, it definitely does pave the way for commuter rail. So. Correct. A quiet zone simply eliminates the need for a train horn as it approaches a grade crossing. Correct. And that's why there's, we're looking at, you know, there are many different opportunities and options available for how train traffic operates on the FEC.
Thank you. Okay, we've had all the input.
The Federal Rail Administration has not done the environmental impact study yet. And the loan.
You need your name and address.
Oh, excuse me. Gian Spatz, our business is at 805 Federal Highway. All of this is pending. Their 1.6 billion is based on the environmental impact study. They will be having that before the end of the year, and everyone needs to make their voice heard. If this impact affects all of us, it's up to us to make that statement to them because we're the ones that helped make that decision. When they hear our voice, they may not get that 1.6 billion.
Thank you.
So you should look at it on the Internet. They have a website, and they will be announcing those hearings. I think it will be going on for, what, 90 days?
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna stop that now, the public input. I just wanna say, first of all, I want to thank the All Aboard people for your representative being here and sharing this information. I specifically asked for this meeting so that that could happen, that you could put out your information to the public and hear some back from the public. And I, and I listened, and I can tell you, we had about 14 people that I counted, it was more than 14, but I only counted the ones that said they were from Boynton Beach because I wanted to hear what Boynton Beach people felt about it. And it was split, there was about nine people that spoke against it and about five people that spoke, five or, I say, yeah, five people spoke for it. So obviously, there's, there's pros and cons for this. People have feelings about it, and I'm glad you're here to hear what some of the concerns are. I think that's helpful to you, and it may be helpful to the people when they hear back on what's gonna happen. So there, it sounds there's still a lot up in the air about this whole project that could happen. It looks like it could happen, it may not happen, we don't know. But I want the, the Commission to hear from the public. And I think the good thing about this meeting tonight is only there was, like, we only heard from about 14 Boynton residents, but we have 67,000 residents in Boynton Beach. So these stories will go out tomorrow, I'm sure, in the newspaper, and I think we'll get a lot more input back. So I'm tonight, am not gonna decide one way or the other, you know, pro or con on this. I'm gonna stay neutral because I want to hear more from the public on where they stand. So that's kinda why I'm coming. But I, like, again, I really appreciate that you come and share this with us, because I think it's good. That's how we find out about things, and that's how we hear how everybody feels about it. That's where I'm at. Commissioner.
Like yourself, Mayor, I appreciate the public input. I think it's very important when we're trying to make these kind of decisions. I thank you for your presentation, it was excellent, you're very enthusiastic in what you're doing, and I appreciate that. The concerns I had in my questions was that your financing, the 1.6 million, billion, is taxpayer dollar. You're not in position to divulge your other financing. We understand it's coming from hedge funds. I'm a little troubled by that. Also, you are not ready to divulge your ridership, the numbers of your ridership, or your ticket prices for a family of four from Miami to Orlando. So I'm going on the premises of buyer beware. So, thank you.
That's Patrick, and then I'll come to you.
I'd just like to clarify one thing about the environmental impact statement. There's actually two, correct? One is already done, from like West Palm to Miami is completed, and the one that's still up in the air is from West Palm to Orlando. So that's, it's halfway done. All right.
Good. Good to know.
I usually try not saying much in meetings because I like to save it up for when I have something to say, so that's tonight. At the Forest Park Neighborhood Association meeting, there was a Not All Aboard Florida flyer, and one of the things it said is, whoever wrote it said, "I could not imagine traveling 80 to 120 miles an hour, miles per hour on a railroad." I don't have to imagine that because I've made three trips to Europe, which I use the railroad system extensively. The first one, I flew into Frankfurt, and my sister picked me up and took me on the autobahn to Heidelberg, and it was actually a slowdown. And then from there, I got on the rail at Munich, from Heidelberg to Munich, and I got on the wrong train because I heard the trains were on time, so I was a couple of minutes early, and it was like, so 12 minutes before, one train left, the other one left, and I was, took the slow train to Munich down the, but it was scenic, it was good. And I don't speak German, so it was interesting conversation with the ticket conductor, but it was like crazy Americans. But from Munich, I took a bus around touring and then got back on and took to Vienna where I extensively used the Vienna subway, and it was back pretty much the same way. The second one was, my wife and I flew into Shannon Airport in Ireland, stayed with some friends, but I wanted to see some World War II things, so I, they put me on the rail line at Limerick at 7:00 AM, and I took it to Dublin, which I think was fairly a quick train, and then the bus across Dublin to the airport, and Ryanair to Scholenthall Airport in Berlin. It's about a 300-yard walk from there to the train station at the airport, and then to the main Berlin train station, which is actually five floors of trains. They're stacked on top of each other, so they come from all directions. So you have to take an elevator up and down. And then I took a train, the hardest part was buying a ticket from there, you know, no German. So, but I made it up to, heading for Pinamunde, and it switched out at a local train about 30 miles from Pinamunde, and that local train sits on the train siding until the, the main train comes and drops the people off, so there's like a two-minute switchover. And then I ended up in a seaside village on the Baltic Sea, and I had to walk a mile to the motel, so that was a problem. But all in all, from Limerick, Ireland to the Baltic Sea, about 10 miles from the Polish border, was about 14 hours, all on public transportation, so that's, I thought that was pretty positive. And then the local train in Pinamunde, there was, you know, a lot of walking museums in the airport, but the reverse was about the same, except I missed the train at a station somewhere in former East Germany, and it was about 9:00 o'clock at night, and the sun was going down. It was, I thought I was gonna spend there all night, but then a family came through, and to them, the train service was like, oh, we missed one, we'll get the next one. It was like part of their daily culture. So they spoke English because they're going to university, so they guided me back to Berlin. And then Ryanair back to Dublin. What's so funny?
No, we tried to find out what we're not doing. You for three minutes.
It was something out of a Lacire novel. I could go into details. It was, I thought I was gonna spend the night there. Well, the point is, it works. And the other thing is, the third one was from Munich, flew into Munich Airport to the train station. It was again, a fast train from there, commuter line up to where they did the 1936 Winter Olympics, and then back, and then went back to Vienna, took the subway again, and then in Budapest for five days, and extensive subways, and took a train out to 10 miles out of town, made it to a Roman city. The point is, the country needs something like that. And. The point is, when I-95 was first built in South Florida, it wasn't much good for anything either. There were many incomplete segments. In the 70s, they get to FAU with a two-lane Congress Avenue to Yamato, and then back through the back neighborhoods of Boca. And all transportation is publicly funded, airports, roads, canals. I-95 from here to Port St. Lucie costs at least a million dollars per mile to build, a public money, so nothing's for free. I agree, there is little immediate direct benefit to Boynton Beach, but it will be in the future. If 2016, you can get to Orlando was what was pointed out, I agree too, I don't need to go back to Mickey Mouse World anytime soon. But in 2020, they're talking about the commuter stops between West Palm and Miami, and that will help Boynton. And then who's to say what the future, this is the first step. 2030, you might be able to go to Jacksonville, or Tampa, or Atlanta, or New York, or Chicago, or DC at 120 miles an hour, and that's, that's what the country needs, and so I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Merker.
Wow. That was an elongated story of traveling. I hear two things, and I have no answer. I thank you also for coming, but I didn't get my answer. It's, what I'm hearing today from the people and what I'm hearing from people who own business, it's a business, it's a business decision versus a citizen feeling emotion and concern about life. I think what was put forth today from your company, there's, I don't like the word holes in it, but there's a lot of lack of information. It's the concern of the mass versus the minority. The minority is the business owner, the mass is the people. And I think the people have a lot of fair questions that they're asking. I think the biggest thing that personally upset me is, how do I say it? I heard a lot of run-on sentences. I didn't hear specifics. A run-on sentence just keeps rambling, like fellow Commissioner did, just keeps going and going without a point of information. So thank you for coming, but I think there's a lot of pieces you have to fill. And as far as the citizens, I think you have a right to be concerned, and I think this is something that unfortunately will take a fairly long period of time to get the correct answers.
Commissioner McGrath.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to also say thank you for coming. I did meet with you all one-on-one privately, thank you for that as well. This All Aboard Florida, the FEC tracks, they do run directly through District Two. I am listening, I'm listening to also the citizens, I'm listening to the quiet zones, but most of all, whenever it comes down, I'm just saying, I have to listen to what the constituents of Boynton says. Thank you.
Okay. It's okay with the Commission. My suggestion would be that we had a really good meeting, got a lot of good information here, got a lot of good input. I think we're gonna get a lot more input, and so I would suggest that we take this and, and think over what we heard tonight and, and listen to hear what we're gonna hear in the future before we take a position one way or the other. That would be my suggestion, but it's up to the Commission what you want to do.
I'd make a motion that we hold off any vote on either up or down, if we support this project until we hear some more input. I think that's a great idea. Can't hurt.
There a second?
I'm gonna second that motion, but not with the up and down. I'm just, I know he's trying to mean you're no good and bad, but anyway, I will second that motion.
A motion and a second, stated, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to public audience now. There was a couple of individuals who wanted to talk about, they, now is the time, the gentleman there and the, the school board candidate, this is the time to speak on your, your comment. Yes, sir, you want to come forward, public audience at this time? We ask you of your name and address for the record and make your comments in a three-minute time period.
Yes, Minister Bernard Wright, 713 Northwest Second Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'd like the Commission to have a dialogue with me tonight about three issues here, and this is a people's issue, this is not Bernard Wright's issue. And then the first one is the charge on the pool. The, the, the children just not enjoying the pool, can't enjoy the pool, and man, it's ridiculous that you go by that pool day after day, even weekends, and you don't even hear the noise you used to hear hooping and hollering in the pool because there are very few that there. And the ones that are there are either driving in from the suburb, the citizens of Boynton Beach and the heart of Boynton, these are the privileged people, they don't have the money for these children to just go in that pool. $2 for a dollar for the child, you got four or five different children, especially in this economic times. The second is the Sarah Simms Park restroom being clean and consistent upkeep. That's my neighborhood, I'm 50 yards away from it, I'm there all the time. I'm gonna work with y'all in encouraging people to, hey, listen, we're gonna keep it clean, I just want the city to do their job. Having the doors open on time, keeping it clean with toilet paper, towels, and soap with those dispensers operating properly. The third point is police-citizen conduct. Been very bad in Boynton, there's very great controversy. I talked with Chief Katz, I had a long dialogue with one of his representatives over the phone, because the people, they come to me, they call me 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. When these officers are running around around park, their language, I mean, it's disgusting for a professional police officer to speak the way they talk with these people in Boynton, not just the heart of Boynton, but we've had incidents throughout Boynton. These are the three points I'd like to y'all to address, and we can get a resolution on, I mean, immediately.
I will, well, let me go with the first one. You talked about the pool.
Yes, sir.
For a dollar, for a child, it costs a dollar to go in the pool?
It's $2 for a dollar.
And you can stay all day, I assume, and you know, nothing in this life is free. I think for a dollar, that's a hell of a bargain.
We're being charged for the public parks, too.
It costs us to keep that pool up, too, to keep it going. So there's charge, the city pays a lot of money to make that happen, and $1 is not a lot to ask for that.
Mayor, my family are the ones that fought for that pool. We, I learned how to swim in the canal, when we couldn't even go to the beach when it was segregated. It was always free. They may charge for a splash party, something of that nature, an event. But I don't think the money that you're getting is supplying the money for the lifeguards nor for the upkeep of the park, of the pool, under no circumstances. If so, I want the documents. I want it to go over, I have a attorney that will look over it and everything else. I don't want that charge on the pool. These children need to enjoy that pool, Mayor, you don't live there. I'm there all the time. These children don't have nowhere to go, they don't have no engagements, they're in these streets, and man, I'm telling you, these streets are taking them alive at young ages, shooting dice, smoking marijuana, things of this nature. I'm pro marijuana, but I'm just telling you, they're going out there because they don't have no engagements, nothing at Carol Simms Park, nothing at Sarah Simms Park.
Yeah, all right, your time's up, but I will tell you, when I was a kid, I went to pools a lot, too. I didn't have a place for a pool, but I never got to one, got in one free. There's always a charge.
I don't know where you went to.
And it costs money, but, but anyway, on your Sarah Sims thing, we'll ask the Parks and Rec to look into that and see what's being done as far as keeping that clean and getting the supplies in there. That should be done on a regular basis, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem there. So we'll look into that.
Okay. The third issue is a very grave issue, and that is the police's and their conduct. We have citizen police officers encounter laws that govern how a police officer is to conduct himself, in three categories, and we're talking about consensual detention arrest. Either they need training in disrespect, they don't know it, they need to know it, or they need to implement.
I'll let the chief address that for you. Chief, do you want to make comment on that?
I just said, I just told him to stay seated, sorry.
Well, go ahead and give him a quick comment here on that, just because we know what brought up.
Hi, Jeff Katz, Chief of Police. Reverend Wright, I appreciate the comment and the feedback. I would say to you that we've had, you and I.
Yes.
Have had a very open dialogue up until this point. Nothing has changed within our department in terms of the conduct of our personnel. I patently reject the notion that our members are mistreating the public. There was a video that came out recently that occurred 18 months ago, which, as you know, was six months before I ever took over as Chief of Police. So, you know, right now, there's some stuff in the, in the forefront, but this stuff's not new.
I know.
You know, and if there's a specific complaint, call me. You've always had the ability to do it. But what I have an issue with, and why I sprung up when I heard you talk broadly about the conduct of the officers of this department, is because I think it's an injustice. I don't think it's appropriate to broadly categorize the officers in this department who serve this city with distinction as misfits or treating people inappropriately on, on a generalized level. I think that's, that's not a, an accurate assessment of our personnel, and certainly if we're open to specific individual incidents and dealing with those incidents, I think you have to allow that process to work. Personally, I see these officers every single day, do a fine job every single day. I see them go out, they risk their lives, they work on weekends, they work on holidays, they work at night. I just left last week, I went and visited one of our officers in the hospital who, who suffered a broken back in the performance of his duties. He was He was struck by a car in the performance of his duties, somebody trying to get away. And I see a lot of blame that gets thrown around, not very much credit that gets thrown around. And personally, I take a great deal of pride in our officers, and I will stand behind them.
And listen, I'm here, not that I'm going to gate anything, but they just had last night an incident. We'll get the video at the Easy Mart. I've heard some of your officers. You want their names and how they talk? I've heard them get out of their job description and the performance of their duty. You want some of their names? I'll give you their names. And just last night, they come with guns drawn, inappropriately, it's just not necessary. They are aggressive. I understand what you're saying, been doing it for years. No one has stood up and come against the police officer in disrespect regarding their conduct. Man, I've been personally victimized by their conduct throughout my life. So I can agree with you, agree with your officers, and standing behind them, but Bradshaw stand by his deal, and they shoot them down. We don't want a Ferguson in Boynton. That's all I'm saying. To God be the glory. That's all I'm saying. You're not down there. You don't hear them talk. They're going to talk differently around you, but when they get down there, I'm going to tape some of them, and I'll bring it to this commission. To God be the glory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and I come out of spirit, not on spiritual hostility.
All right, let him talk.
Thank you. I represent District Two. Okay? I grew up across from the John Jensen Pool. We lived at 304 Northwest 12th Avenue. I see too many kids in the pool. I don't know where they get their dollars from. I'm not trying to take up for it, but they're over there. I see them when I sit in my parents' yard, they have buses over there all doing this. So, Mr. Wright, I'm not going to get into debate with you. Sir, you had your time. This is mine. I'm just saying, this is not the place anyway. And I'm just saying, you know, there are some things that we do need to brush up on, but to come down and publicly attack individuals, and you said that they call you at 3:00 in the morning.
Man, come on. I get calls all the time.
Sir, I'm glad that they're calling you at 3:00 in the morning because I represent District Two. Nobody calls me about the police.
Because you don't have that kind of connection and that kind of communication and dialogue with those people down there. To God be the glory.
But through with it.
Let me, I just want to, one more thing. Have you had the opportunity to attend the Citizens Police Academy?
Have I had?
Have you had the opportunity to attend? Have you attended the Citizens Police Academy?
No, why?
I would suggest you do that, because I did do that, because I'm going to tell you what. It's really enlightening to see what these police go through. They will show you everything they go, and then they will actually
Wait, let me finish.
Let me finish. And you will actually go out and ride with them if you choose and see what they have to put up with and what they go through. You can ride with them and experience that for yourself. I'm going to tell you what, I did that, and I can tell you that, yes, sometimes in such situations, certain language may be exchanged, maybe curse words are changed. But I'm going to tell you, when you've got a second between life and death, God knows what might come out of your mouth. And I know what you're talking about. I got the video that, I got all kinds of info about this video. Well, I'm talking about it. The video that went out back in 20
I'm not talking about that video.
I am. I'm talking about it. In 2013, and I got emails from all over this country, from people from New York, from Massachusetts, from Utah, California, all over the country, coming back and bad-mouthing my police force, and they have no idea what these police do here in this city, but they're all there. But I'm going to tell you what, I haven't gotten one email or one call about my officer who has seven titanium screws in his back because some guy decided to run over him rather than get a flat tire. I don't get that. But these people are, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell publicly, these are radicals from all over the country that don't like police, and they will do anything to go out of their way. But I'm going to tell you what, I've written with my police. I know how they perform, and I back them 100%.
And you just gave a blanket indictment to the citizens of Boynton Beach in that respect, Mayor Taylor. And let me just say this, I'm not, listen, police have that kind of, listen, they have that kind of activity. They have that kind of job that they have. It is dangerous, but that has nothing to do with
Pointing information.
Conduct.
Are we having a three-minute limit here or what?
Yeah. Okay, we're finished. Thank you.
To God be the glory, conduct.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. And on a more positive note, I will start with the same line, "To God be the glory." I want to personally thank some people with this city. And first and foremost, the police chaplain and a dear friend Reverend Hay, who was in my time of need, not only a friend, but someone that came through and was there in prayer, in physical form, in support. And I want to thank him and his lovely wife Mildred. I also want to thank Commissioner McCray. Commissioner McCray was also there. We prayed together. He checked up on me, made sure that I was making progress, and I greatly appreciate that. Commissioner Merker, the same thing. Our city manager, Lori Laverie, not only is she a consummate professional, but she is one hell of a class act. Let me tell you something, you need to appreciate her. She is quality. To our executive director of the CRA, Vivian Brooks, who had also gone through a similar situation many years ago. It's good to have friends, and I greatly appreciate her friendship, her kindness, and her support. And there are many others in this city that can relate. I remember when I prayed for Janet, and I appreciate Janet praying for me. I want you to approach things as many of you have, and understand that the power of prayer is amazing. And I ask you to pray for our nation because this is tough times for our country. We have people attacking and that have no respect for human life around this world. When you see beheadings and things like that, it's just wrong, and it's getting closer and closer to this country. I also ask you to pray for our city and make decisions prayerfully. This Saturday, you are going to be, most of you, I believe, will be attending the BDB Gala. And this year, it's difficult for me. I won't be attending this year, and I ask you to pray for Kelly Smallridge and her boys. It's been a difficult year for her. She's managing. She's got a great support network. But every time I think of Rhett, her youngest boy, and to lose a father at 11 is difficult. And so I ask that you pray for her and for her children. And third, on a more upbeat type of thing, it's football season, guys, and Boynton Beach is ranked number two in the county. So let's get you guys out to a football game on a Friday night and support our local team. And if you can't make it on a Friday night, there's always the East Boynton Wildcats over at the Hester Center on Saturdays, and they play basically all day long. And let's face it, the future of this city is those children. And with them engaged in positive activities, they will be productive citizens of the future.
Thank you.
So I ask you to do those things, and thank you also for all your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I promise this is the last time today. Dr. Blas, 113 West Arrow Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. The first thing I want to say is that, and I know Chief Katz is listening and Bernard are listening, that, as you all know, I believe we have the finest police department in the whole country, and we also have wonderful people. I was close friends with Reverend Cheney and Bernard, I just met, and Gertrude. I think I'm delighted to see that they are talking to each other, and they are exchanging how they feel. I want to offer, since I'm close friends with both of them, if I can ever be a bit of a diplomat and try to understand both sides, because on the one hand, I see tremendous pride in our police department; on the other hand, I see a legacy of deeply hurt feelings from some people in the community, and that should be resolved, that should not be disregarded. So I'm offering again, they are already talking, so they are not listening to me, but if they start listening to me, please, I will talk to both of you.
Thank you.
Now, the other thing is, I think Commissioner McCray will be happy. I'm going to Peru next week, not permanently, though, but just for a week.
Thank you.
Have a little break to spend some time with my wife. And finally, I want to update you that definitely we are continuing the research and building up of the University of Boynton, and while I'm gone, please make sure that building does not disappear and nobody wrecks it, okay? Thank you.
Sonny Garcia, 1631 Third Lane. I'd like to find out from you all, I know who's in charge of parks, but who's really in charge of parks?
Parks and Rec Director.
Okay. When they go inspect the parks, do they just inspect the building or the perimeter also?
I think they look at everything.
I doubt it, because I live on 17th, Basil Hester. The fence and the perimeter has been broken or cut, whatever, for almost a year, and I don't see no repairs on the fence. I suggest that when your people go out and inspect the parks, not only the building itself, but around the perimeter to see what has to be done. I'd like to see the fence be repaired before the next commission meeting.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Before we proceed, on this coming Saturday morning at 10:00 AM, there will be a funeral for Reverend Charles Lambert at the St. John Missionary Baptist Church. The reason I'm bringing this up was that when Reverend Lambert came to Boynton, he came as a young man. He married in St. John. He started out at St. John. He pastored the New Mount Zion. He also pastored Peaceful Zion in Deerfield Beach, Florida, and that service is going to be at 10:00 this Saturday morning. That we cannot have a resolution ready for that service, that we could have something read into the records for Reverend Lambert, who was a longtime giver of this community because he gave when he didn't have to give, and he served, and his parishioners are still here, and I just want us to put something out to the community to let the family know that we are praying for their speedy recovery as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Anybody else under public audience?
Floyd Zonenstein, 2620 Northeast First Court, Boynton Beach. I wasn't going to say anything, but when I heard about what went on with the Boynton Beach Police Department, I can only speak for VRG, Village Royal and the Green.
Thank you.
And that is the best thing we ever did was to get the Boynton Beach Police in there. I know what type of a job they had because I am a disabled Philadelphia policeman injured in the line of duty. And we were always taught that when somebody approaches the car, just make sure that he's not the guy that doesn't like a police officer. You have to protect yourself, not only the people, but you're giving your life for them in certain cases. And these people do not appreciate that, and they don't understand what a human life is worth. What they get paid is nothing compared to what they do, and I commend them.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the public audience. Next thing will be administrative. We have no appointments to the advisory boards tonight, so we'll go on to the consent agendas or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion is unanimous. Takes us to item seven, Proposed Resolution Number 14084. Approve and authorize the city manager to execute Task Order U-1B-01 with Matthews Consulting for a not-to-exceed fee of $198,000 for a study of options, surveying, design, permitting, bidding, and services during construction of the north and south roads, utility stormwater and water main improvement project. This is in accordance with approval of RFQ 0172821-14-DJL. General Consulting Services Scope Category B is approved by the City Commission on July 1, 2014. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to public hearing, opposed ordinance number 14015. I'll have this attorney read the title.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida regarding the application of Lorraine Ryan of the Women's Circle, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land located at 910 to 918 Southwest Fourth Street, as more fully described herein from community commercial district to neighborhood commercial district, providing for conflict severability in an effective date.
This is the second reading of public of ordinance number 14015. Is there a motion?
That good?
There's a motion and a second. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance?
Was she supposed to address this?
No, she didn't have to. Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
I at least got to get my name on the record. This is the third public hearing. My name's Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning, and here representing Women's Circle. There are, there is one lady here that would like just a moment of your time. I appreciate your motion, and it's going to cost me lunch to have them over so they can see my PowerPoint presentation.
Go ahead. Who wants to address this ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Jill Weiss. I was an English as a second language teacher in the Jersey City, New Jersey, public school system for 32 years. I retired one year ago, and I moved to Boynton Beach. I'm currently working as a volunteer ESL and reading teacher at the Women's Circle here in Boynton Beach. My students, all of Haitian descent, were placed in my class just a few months ago because they wanted to learn to speak and read English. In these past few months, they are well on their way to achieving just that, and I am very proud of them. In fact, I can honestly say that they are the best group of students I have ever had throughout my career as an English as a second language teacher. The dedication and support services that all the women receive at the Women's Circle is incredible to me. Sister Lorraine Ryan has tirelessly provided for years the services that new immigrants entering the state of Florida rightfully deserve. I applaud her, as well as her hard-working staff, for the excellent work this organization has been doing for years. Since working at the Women's Circle, I know that space has been a major issue. We should not have to tell new immigrants that they have to wait for available space in order to learn to speak English or to read. With so many immigrants entering the state of Florida, space should not be an issue, especially when there are veteran teachers willing to teach. The Women's Circle is such an asset to the community of Boynton Beach. Now, this is my new community, and it needs to expand. Two small classrooms are just not big enough to service the amount of people who are signing up. It breaks my heart to see anyone having to wait to learn English until available space opens up to them. I speak on behalf of my wonderful students, my future students, and for the dedicated staff at the Women's Circle of Hope. As they say, "If you build it, they will come."
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt a second? I think you're singing to the choir here. So if you, if you would, we're trying to pass this for you. If you'd just let us.
Okay. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Casello.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye, and thank you, Sister Lorraine.
Vote is five, the vote is 5-0.
This takes us to approve a major site plan modification to allow expansion of the existing social service agency, the Women's Circle, from 1,150 square feet to 5,731 square feet, consisting of one-story addition of 4,581 square feet and related site improvements located at 910 through 918 Southeast Fourth, applicant Sister Lorraine Ryan, the Women's Circle. This was tabled.
Motion to remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anybody wish to address this item?
I'll make one comment again, Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning. I have a motto that the best presentation to an elected body is none at all, so thank you for your support.
Very good.
It's gonna cost you lunch.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, show the motion unanimous. Good luck on your expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second reading in public hearing on item C, ordinance 14-016.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida regarding the application of Paul Trembley of Booz Development Group, LTD, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land located at the southeast corner of North Seacrest Boulevard and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, as more fully described herein, from single and two-family residential district to neighborhood commercial, providing for conflict severability in an effective date.
This is the second reading on ordinance number 140-16. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anybody wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Casello.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Is there a motion to remove item D from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve request for new site plan to construct a one-story, 8,136-square-foot retail building and related site improvements on a .80 acre parcel located at 1010 North Seacrest Boulevard, applicant Paul Trembley, Booz Development Group, Inc. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anybody wish to address this public hearing? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Is there a motion to remove table E from the table?
So moved.
Item E from the table.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve request for the community design plan appeals, CDPA 14-001 and 14-002, in conjunction with the request for to construct a one-story, 8,130-square-foot retail building and related site improvements on a .80 acre parcel located at 1010 North Seacrest Boulevard, applicant Paul Trembley, Booz Development Group. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anybody else wish to address this item?
Yeah, could I just?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. This is, this is, we're saying for rezoning. Is there any, I don't know, I just feel there's information I don't have, and I don't really want to vote. If I'm right.
Rezoning's already passed. Rezoning was the first item that was passed. This is a request for design plan appeals.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next item is legal, proposed ordinance number 14-017.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending Part II, Chapter 14 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles Attacked by Creating a New Section 1412 Entitled Curbstoning, Regulating the Purchase and Sale of Motor Vehicles from Individuals Other Than a Dealer, Providing for Codification, Conflict, Severability, and an Effective Date.
This proposed ordinance 14-017 on second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
I would just like to, it's a great ordinance, I think we need it. I'm for it, but I would like to maybe get the, bump it up to the county level a little bit, maybe we can get the county involved, maybe, as you know, we have a lot of parcels of land here in the city of Boynton, especially in District Four, that county-owned, where somebody right next door might be in the city limits, the other one's the county land, so we can just clean that up.
When we pass this ordinance, that we send a copy to the county and ask them to look into the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay? And I will say, I, just Sunday, there was another car parked on Federal Highway in front of the Women's Circle, the For Sale sign in it, so please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Casello.
Yes.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
The vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 14018, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part II, Chapter 13, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Business Tax Receipts and Certificates of Use, to provide for the use of special magistrates for business tax receipt. Appellate matters to provide for definition of special magistrate, to provide for any amendments to Chapter 205 Florida statutes, to provide for violation of the, violations of this chapter may be brought as code violation, modify when the director of development shall issue a business tax receipt to provide for methods of enforcement, to provide for when the director of development may revoke, refuse, or deny any certificate of use for business tax receipt, to provide for any special magistrate of the city to hear appeals of the director of developments determinations regarding business tax receipt, providing for codification, severability, and an effective date.
Proposed ordinance number 14018 on second reading, public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
Is this, what is there, is there a cost involved with this? We're gonna be paying a special magistrate? Is that how I'm reading that?
This is a permitting, it'll be a permitting process, and we will be charging a fee for it.
Of charging, but is there the special?
They will only go in front of the special magistrate like they do now if they're in violation of the code. Then they go through code compliance and they end up.
Okay, then we already get that in place. Okay, thank you.
And that was Nancy Burns.
Sorry, you're right, Nancy Byrne, Director of Development.
Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 14019, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the city of Boynton Beach Firefighters Pension Trust Fund, amending Section 18179, extending the terms of office for trustees from two to four years, providing for codification, severability, repealer, and providing an effective date.
Ordinance number 14019 on second reading, public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Please call the roll.
McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Casello.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 14020, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part III, Land Development Regulations, Chapter IV, Article V, Minimum Off-Stree Parking Requirement, Section III, IV, and V, inserting flexible parking provisions, promoting.
This is supposed to be heard on 9/16.
Right.
Table, so we'll skip that one. Proposed ordinance 14021.
Motion to remove the city attorney.[1644.01]